I have no idea.
It depends on, you know, how specific you want it.
I don't know. Probably not.
I'm not counting on it.
I would not count on it.
Okay, I have six o'clock. If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kristi, can you take a roll call, please?
Sure. Cortelli?
Present.
Fontana?
Here.
Nakarado?
Here.
Pappenforth?
Present.
Martin?
Here.
Stevens? Mayor Shore?
Here.
Acquorum is present.
Right, and that takes us to the consent agenda. And before we get to that, I'm going to ask our attorney, I believe has a comment or two on one of the items.
Yes, I just want to call attention to number seven, the agreement with North Point Development. It already indicates in the packet, but I'm going to, it's going to be substantively the same as what you see, but if you guys just give me general approval to finalize it as it's legal terms, and I'm working with Kristen on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening?
I do.
Yeah.
I would just like to comment on item number nine, and I know our finance team is here somewhere. Amy, at least I thought she was.
She just walked in.
Oh, she just walked in. Amy, you did a great job. Thank you. Thank you to your team, and it, no, you don't have to go up. I just want to say thank you. It's a lot of work, that whole bond process and the whole sewer line, and we appreciate you.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I move to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second?
So we have a motion from Councilmember Nakarado, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda. Further discussion?
Do we have to specifically approve finalizing legal terms for item number seven, or just...
I just wanted, for public knowledge, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cortelli?
Yes.
Nakarado?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, and that will take us to citizen comment, and this is an opportunity for council to hear from our community. Public will be limited to three minutes each during citizen comments, and this will apply to the public hearings as well, as I'm sure you can tell by the number of people in the room this evening, there is going to be a lot of people talking, and in order to be fair to everyone, I'm going to hold everyone to the three minutes on that. If anyone would like to discuss after the meeting, or in the course of the next week, please feel free to reach out to me. Council may not respond to your comment this evening, rather, we may take your comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to the appropriate department for follow-up, and if necessary, the city administrator will correct the public record. And for citizen comment tonight, Adam Martinez.
Good evening, one and all. I would like to, in essence, comment about the Adelman situation. It is not getting any better. She is, in essence, living in a mortar home. The trash is not cleaned up, too, like Mrs. Dooms wanted and the police wanted, and she has been given, in essence, enough time. I spoke with an officer last week and said that they're going through the process all over again, and in essence, taking it to court. Now, what I don't understand is, why does the police, your administration, why do, why do, she trashes the place up, the police have cleaned it up a number of times over the years, and then she goes back to trashing it? And Debbie Clark's attorney mentioned that, in essence, she has racked up $21,000 of unpaid citations. Now, the police, when they give her citations, she doesn't pay the citations, nor does she not want to have the ability to do that. This has been going on for a long time, and this is not a law and order administration. In essence, when my neighbor's house burned down, the mayor did not go over the next day to tour the property, and in essence, the city attorney has not done anything to make the situation okay, along with city administrator Kristi Dooms. In essence, what is, the police in Denver take their jobs more seriously than the ones in Salida, because, in essence, they make excuses and everything, and in essence, and my neighbors, my constituents have to live this way, and they've lived this way for almost 30 years, and in essence, they're getting sick and tired of it, I'm getting sick and tired of it, my mom has to, in essence, in essence, buy containers so the mice won't come in and, in essence, eat the food, and in essence, and, and, and I don't think that none of what the city has done has taught her a lesson, and Mrs. Dooms needs to get her police force to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment. I mean, I know a lot of people signed up for the hearing. Is there anyone online? Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, that will bring us to ordinance 2025-14, an ordinance of the City Council of Salida, Colorado, annexing the city of Salida certain tract of land in unincorporated Chaffey County known as a 5H LLC annexation. Now, this is a second reading and a public hearing, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing and start by turning it over to staff to summarize their report. Thanks, Carolyn.
Good evening, Carolyn Toyston, Senior Planner, here to present this item for you this evening. On June 23rd of 2025, staff received an application from 5H LLC to annex a 15.06 acre parcel out of the 18.32 acre property located east of Spruce Street and north of West Yuray Avenue. Only the 15.06 acre portion that you see here in yellow is, which is under separate ownership, is requested to be annexed at this time. Resolution 2025-27 confirmed substantial compliance for the annexation per state statute. A conceptual plan was presented at a joint work session of City Council and Planning Commission on June 2nd. That plan does not constitute a subdivision application. It was prepared at the developer's option in order to obtain initial feedback.
I'm sorry, one second. There is additional seating if you can't find a seat here in, okay, all right, sorry about that.
And as you know, the joint work session is not a public hearing, so public comment was not taken that time, and it was not noticed in the paper as is standard for joint work sessions. Okay. This is where we are in the process. It is important to point out that this is a private property proposal. It is not a city-initiated project like the South Ark Master Plan, where a robust public input process is conducted, and again, there is no subdivision plan associated as of yet with this proposal. As requested by council, I would like to clarify staff's actions regarding the application. First, I do apologize to anyone in the community who may have felt that I was unresponsive. In order to be fair to everyone doing business with the planning department, which has a total of four employees, we generally reply by email to inquiries, and when calls are received or people come to the office, there is usually additional research required, therefore, there's additional time involved, and so meeting is not always productive. And if I had met with every single neighbor who has submitted comments, I would not have had enough time to do my other work. So because a subdivision proposal has not yet been received, we process the annexation and zoning together per city standard processes and state statutes, and we have other applications that have hard deadlines that we're moving along as well. So therefore, I did not indicate to anyone that I was available to meet, as it is not our department protocol to do so. In larger, well-funded communities, they may have enough staff to dedicate to private project-related neighborhood planning, for instance, in Denver, but in Salida, the City Council and Planning Commission meetings, the public hearings are the avenue for public input. So our protocol, again, was to meet with the developer, ensure the application was complete, send the application to review agencies, ensuring that all the state statutes are followed, prepare numerous staff reports, and submit agency comments to the applicant so they're aware of agency concerns. Staff's recommendations are not based on my personal opinion about anything or anyone in our department. It's based on the city's land use and development code, the entirety of the comprehensive plan, the city's future land use map, and overall directives and goals of the city and its elected leaders. And prior to any construction, a subdivision application will need to be submitted and reviewed by staff, along with all of the other reviewing agencies, as well as Planning Commission and City Council in public hearings, which is our standard protocol. This would include a subdivision plat with the layout of the streets and all the lots, the park dedication, utility plans, park improvements, stormwater drainage studies, traffic impact, all of that comes with the subdivision developing the application, which we don't yet have. Okay, moving right along. The state-manded annexation process has been followed, and the last step will be council approval of the annexation agreement, followed by recordation of the appropriate documents and plats. Next slide. I do want to highlight that the police department indicated that any restriction of street connectivity would have negative impacts on emergency response times and access to the hospital. The police chief is not in favor of having any dead-end cul-de-sacs or other limitations in the future development. The fire department also kind of reiterated that emergency access needs to be convenient and meet city standards. Parks and Recreation indicated that park and open space, including dedication and development, will must be satisfied with the submission of the subdivision. In the annexation agreement, of course, council has the right to add any conditions related to that. The finance department, of course, will take fees in lieu, rather, system development fees when those are due, and fees in lieu for schools will be required. On the next slide, I just want to point out, in terms of the area, you can see that the orange arrows indicate where previous subdivisions were plotted, and specifically included in those subdivision approvals, connectivity to the property to the south, which is this annexation. And the way you get out of that subdivision is where the yellow arrows are shown. If you do not have that connection, it means everyone would have to follow the red line all the way around the golf course to get to the hospital, which the police and fire do not want to see. Next slide. And just to reiterate, Public Works indicates those right-of-way configurations have been developed previously. The area is within our municipal services area boundary, and so city services are available, but having multiple points of connection spreads the impacts, and additional access points are critical when the day comes to rebuild infrastructure under the street so as not to restrict access. So again, the more avenues you have to get out of a subdivision, the better. And then, as I mentioned, drainage analysis and stormwater calculations and other things will be required with the subdivision development. Next slide. These are just to reiterate the plat notes in Crestone Mesa subdivision, and the next slide, Cottonwood Green subdivision, where those street connections on Cottonwood Circle and Crestone Mesa were required or included in those plats. So during the Planning Commission hearing on the zoning, the commission, actually, there was a lot of public input, obviously, let me first of all say that, and the developer, actually, the applicant, Walt Harder and his team, offered to put a condition limiting the total number of residential units to 96 for this particular property. The maximum density, if it was just totally built out, would be over 200. A major concern of the neighbors seemed to focus on density, so I believe this was an attempt to alleviate those concerns. This had happened during the discussion of the zoning, and because a zoning approval cannot be conditioned, the Planning Commission requested that City Council place this condition as a condition of approval of the annexation to be added to the annexation agreement. So in keeping with that, and with other recommendations of staff, I would like to read the recommended conditions for this annexation. Firstly, all proposed developments shall meet the requirements of the municipal code. The city shall serve the property with appropriate public utilities. Park dedication and development shall be in compliance with city requirements as approved by City Council. Street connectivity shall be provided through any future proposed subdivision to accommodate appropriate emergency access and as per city standards. Pedestrian connectivity shall be provided to accommodate existing and potential future public sidewalks, shared use paths, and trail networks. And the total number of primary residential dwelling units on the annexed property shall not exceed a total of 96. And with that, you have a proposed motion. I have to answer any questions you have.
Questions.
It's time.
When does the zoning come up? I thought it was part of the annexation.
It's next. It's the next hearing. Yep.
We just discussed this recently for another annexation. But with that limitation of 96 then attached to the annexation, what is the process for changing that?
For changing the limit or anything? You can change any of the conditions you wish. That's your purview. And annexation is a negotiated agreement.
In the future.
In the future?
It can still be negotiated.
You'd have to amend the annexation agreement and... Yeah, to amend any of those conditions. I don't know if you'd have to...
Yeah, I could answer that. So, these conditions not only would be placed on the ordinance that's recorded on the property, there's also an annexation agreement that's recorded on the property. And that means it runs with the land, no matter who the owner is. And to amend an agreement that's for, well, any agreement, especially an agreement that's recorded on the property, the current owner and the city would need to agree and it would need to come in front of council again to amend any of those terms.
Could you speak a little bit? I know the developer, just I think at the end of last week, and I believe he presented this to some of the HOAs, talked about reducing that number of units down to 72.
That's a concept that the developer has. It's not an application. So, we do have those graphics available if you want to see them. I can't really speak to it because I don't know whether it meets city standards. I don't know if there's enough room.
I think that part would be a good thing. Sorry to interrupt. I think that would part, if you let me advise, that that would be good for the applicant to speak to during their presentation.
Great, perfect. Thanks.
Yes, that would be good.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, with the 96 units that were proposed, that goes, I'm just clarifying, that goes with the annexation?
If you make it a condition, it wouldn't normally, but it was offered up and Planning Commission recommended that that limit be placed in the annexation ordinance and agreement.
Okay, so if there is a change when the developer comes to speak and that number changes, that number would go with if we made it a condition?
Correct. If he comes up, speaks, and then you're going through the, making the motion, you can amend the recommended condition to however many units you want, if you want to do that.
Okay, if that land were sold, if he agreed to 96 or whatever number is possible, and that land were sold, does that go with that?
It does. As the city attorney indicated, it goes with the land.
Okay.
It is recorded onto the county clerk's, you know, with the county clerk. So, any future owners have notice of it, but they're also held to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll put it on the annexation plat as a note, whatever, if any conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I want to just make a quick comment. And I understand the frustration I think a lot of people here have. And when I came on as mayor about four years ago, there was an annexation agreement similar to this one that came forward. And I remember going to the Planning Commission meeting that night because I wanted to educate myself on the topic. And our attorney had me leave. I had to leave because of the quasi-judicial nature and the ex parte. So, it's really frustrating for us too. We would love to be able to have conversations with you. And I want to assure everyone, we haven't had conversations with you and we have, there's no one on this dais has met with the developer on this because of that. So I just wanted to put that out there. And with that, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up and give their presentation. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Carolyn, for your time too.
Hi, Bill Hussey, Civil Engineer and Planner, representing the 5H team. Britt Hughes is here tonight as well from the 5H team. Thank you, Carolyn, for the presentation. I'll just gloss over a few of these early ones. Just wanted to reiterate that this parcel has been slated for annexation and those streets indicated for connection since 2010. So 15 years ago, the county agreed they would not take a land use application. It should be annexed. Next slide, please. The 96 unit limit came up because we don't, we shouldn't be talking about zoning at the annexation step, but we kind of have to get out of order. And really, this came about because Planning Commission looked like they were going to zone us R2. Because, because the unit math, as Carolyn said, gets crazy. If you go R3 without any unit limit, it could be 200-something units. We want R3 for other reasons. And we would request that you please zone us R3 and we're willing to have the 96 unit limit in there. And I'm going to get at the end of this to the plan that shows the 72 units. So, and we can talk about what changed. So that's background on the, where the 96 came from. County comp plan showing mixed residential for the parcel. Again, the street connections. City flum showing that this parcel should be either R2 or R3. And again, we think with R3 and the 96 unit limit, we kind of get the best of both worlds, that the unit count won't get out of control. And at the same time, we're able to make efficient use of the land and provide more diversity of housing types and price points. Therefore, next slide, please. City zoning showing again. This is the current zoning. I know that some of the R3 is slated to potentially be changed to R2, but currently, we're surrounded by a mix of R2 and R3. Next slide. So, these are the issues with R2 currently and why we want R3. So, this is a slide showing that it's very difficult to do interior townhomes that R2 currently is basically for a single-family and duplexes. And this is one reason why, because in R2, you have to have a minimum of 45% landscape, which is just not very doable on an interior townhome where your only landscape areas are the front yard and backyard. You don't have any side yard to help with that percentage. So, 45% becomes very difficult. You have to extend the lot to get a lot longer than the kind of typical 125-foot-deep lot that I'm showing here that the market wants. So, this is like the bare minimum of a backyard that could get you there in the current R3. So, it's even difficult to get the 30 in R3. So, R2 really takes the interior townhome potential out of a subdivision. That's one reason. The good news about this one is that the draft land use code fixes it. So, thank you for that, planning staff. And if that goes through in its current form, this problem gets fixed. We don't have to worry about it. Next slide, please. This is the one that does not get fixed by the draft land use code. And it is a parking coverage issue that currently 15% maximum parking access in R2 does not allow you to do a parking lot for apartments. These are some examples through town where people tried to build apartment. Well, they did build apartments and they unfortunately have people backing out onto the public right-of-way, which is rightly no longer allowed in the code. And it also just doesn't present a nice frontage to the public realm, to anyone walking by on the street. They don't see the porches or fronts of houses that are on those apartment buildings. They see cars and it's not great. So, that's one at Third Street on the right and the other one's on I Street on the left. I don't mean to knock those. They did the best they could in the land use code that they had to provide some more affordable housing options. The draft land use code makes it much easier to do apartments in R3, which is the intention. R2 is still very difficult to have a parking lot. You would basically, you'd need to have a creative solution or parking, you know, a garage, basically. Next slide, please. This is, currently, the setbacks are not different, but in the draft code, the front setback is different. R2 is 15 feet, R3 is 10 feet. And we just feel that for what we're trying to do in the front of the house, you know, we want to have good porches on all of these homes that address the sidewalk. And, you know, 10 feet of landscaping is enough. And we would rather put the land to better use in the backyards to better mirror the neighbors that surround this development, which is, I believe, on the next slide, the 72-unit plan, which is five days old now. We did our best to incorporate a lot of what we heard. The biggest change is we got rid of some side loading and we got rid of some alleys that where we have front-loaded homes with backyards backing up to us, we now largely have the same thing on our side. We have front-loaded, you know, driveways off the street rather than alleys to just more precisely mirror what's going on around us. We also have half as many apartments as before and we put the apartments where they're not near any existing homes. Those were, I would have to say, the two main themes that we took away from our couple of meetings that we've had. So, we hope that this can lower the temperature of the whole thing. This is 72 units and, you know, the 96 happened at Planning Commission quite some time ago. So, that's why the discrepancy. We're fine with leaving that alone. We'd prefer not to go precisely to 72 to leave some flexibility in it. And obviously, we're fine with leaving it at 96, like Planning Commission recommended. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for Bill.
Bill, you mentioned that you are providing a diversity of housing types and price points. Can you speak to that with the 72 units and even the 96 units? Like, what are the price points for these houses that you're going to be selling?
They're market rate homes, except for the inclusionary housing. So, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I mean, I think we all in this room probably have a feel for roughly what that is and...
No, that's why I'm asking.
I, I mean, I'd be pulling them out of my, I can't just make up numbers here. If somebody wants to get the median home price sale. Thank you, Bill.
Your development, what you sell your units at is dependent on what it costs to construct. So, you do have an idea of what the construction will be for 96 units, for 72 units. What is your idea of what the median price would be to sell?
I would refer to, Bill knew it off the top of his head. He said 725. Countywide, thank you. 725,000 is what Bill Homquist said. These are market rate sales. So, you get an offer on them is, I think, we mostly know how that works. So, I can't say a number that they're going to, that's certainly out of my control.
Yeah. If you want to speak, you can sign up to speak in public comment, but not now.
So, the reason I'm asking is because I know I want to make sure, and I'm sure the rest of council wants to make sure, that these units are actually going to be serving our community here. If it's going to be at 700,000, that's serving the 160% AMI range. That's not needing that missing middle that we need.
We're trying to walk a fine line here between blending into surrounding neighborhoods and providing more market rate, missing middle housing. And we're open to comment. I actually was looking forward to hearing what council had to say about the trade-offs that we're making here because the 96-unit plan had 32 apartments instead of 16, you know, 32 multifamily units instead of the 16 that we show here. We actually, in this current plan, we don't show any townhomes. We show, you know, a few duplexes, the 16 multifamily units, and the rest is single-family. So, it's quite a dramatic difference and we're certainly open to council's input.
And keep in mind, let's say hypothetically, they went with the 72 units. 12 of those or one out of every six would be for the workforce deed restricted. If it was a 96 units, it would be 16 units, so, which is by the code.
Thank you.
So, with the 96 to the 72, big changes for the neighbors. For, I'm wondering about the municipal services and the roads. And I know that that's a hard, you know, question to answer because this is not in, up, I mean, it is. But, you know, where those roads go, where the services will go, where the police, fire, all of that stuff. We just listened to hers about, you know, the cul-de-sacs and such. So, this is acceptable?
Yeah.
So, the one thing that both plans do is provide connectivity through the subdivision. So, this plan is a little more squiggly, if you will, in that there's a couple additional cul-de-sacs, but not the cul-de-sacs that the neighbors wanted, which was going to put a dead end on Cottonwood Green and a dead end on Crestone Mesa, which would force everyone on those, everyone on those cul-de-sacs to go through those neighborhoods. This way, they can go, anyone can go through the neighborhood, but it's not a through, cut-through by any means because it's serving the residents. The other thing I do want to point out is whatever zoning you pick, the annexation agreement, if it has a limit on the number of units, will cap it. So, the reason for the zoning of the R3 really has to do more with the dimensional standards that allow more flexibility, more public open space as opposed to requiring the lots to have so much more of their own private open space. That was the main difference. And when you get 96 units, it's providing more housing, not less. And it's still way, way less than if you would say just cover it with apartment complexes, which is not being proposed that I know of in any way, shape, or form. So, but I did ask the applicant about the 72 unit and he said the style would be much more suburban, in other words, expensive. So, my guess would be well over a million-dollar homes. That's not, I don't have that information, but you can, you can take that for, you know, what you think. Because they have to build, they have to make money to build all the infrastructure, the roads and the park and the school and the stormwater. So, that's how that works. I'm sure you know.
Yeah, and I think it is like important to have that side-by-side comparison of what can be done by right and what we're talking about so that we have this...
And I'll discuss that more in the zoning.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
We got lots more time.
Yeah, yeah, totally, totally. It's just, it's good to have that side-by-side so we know, we have the comparison. Oh, and I'd, and I'd love to hear the developers say that you're not going to just subdivide parcels into 19 units each and then bypass the major subdivision process. You think you can say that out loud at a meeting? Just from, just from past experience with the developers.
They still have to annex it. And if you have an annexation agreement, you're stipulating what they can and cannot.
Right, yeah, yeah, I hear that. It's just, we're just talking.
I just want to make it clear for people here so they don't get confused.
Yeah, yeah. It would just make me feel better, but that's not important.
Something that would also make me feel better. So, knowing that we have discussed it only being rentals for inclusionary housing units and also hearing the price point for the houses, I would like to propose that we maybe see one out of five units, inclusionary housing instead. That would get us 14 units for the 72-unit concept plan and it would get us 19 units out of the 96. I don't know if anyone...
Can we just do that? Is that allowed?
Is that part of the annexation discussion?
Yep, you can certainly do that as part of the annexation agreement. You can almost do whatever you want.
I've never heard of...
I mean, so you, you are getting what you want, right, Bill? You guys are getting what you want by not having any for-sale units.
Yes, that, that doesn't meet the current code, because it requires the same proportion of sale and for rent. So if they go for all for rent and don't have any, and, and all the market rates are for sale, that doesn't technically meet code, so that's why sometimes in an annexation agreement, what you're suggesting or something similar is, is put in there to kind of make up for that difference.
Yeah, it's a negotiation.
Sure. Just request that you maybe consider, sorry Carolyn, keeping it to twelve, or, no, there's sixteen there. So, yeah, gosh, I guess make it twelve. Yeah, that would be an interesting precedent to set about doing extra ones for rentals. And I guess that you would ask, I would just, I guess, ask to still have the option to go per the code, too.
If you want us to go for the code, we could do for-sale units and rentals. You asked that we only provide rentals, because the chiefy, chiefy housing authority provided you information that showed that that's what we need. I don't disagree with that. However, I'd like to see more units that are affordable for the workforce, especially when considering the price points that you've been giving us this evening that are not going to be reaching the missing middle.
It's, you have every right to ask for that. We're hoping that just by giving you what you needed more so than what you didn't need, it would be a win-win.
We don't need more million-dollar homes.
I understand your frustration, but I would, I would love to see this remain a win-win, rather than, you know, less of a win for the developer when we're trying to provide something that the city needs. But I, yeah, absolutely, you can put that in the annexation agreement.
I mean, maybe it makes sense to offer, for the developer to offer sixteen inclusionary units out of the seventy-two, since that's the, that's the number of walk-up apartments. I can't imagine being able to sell those easily when the rest are rentals. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong on that.
Well, and I'm leaning into the ninety-six units now.
Yeah, we'll come, let, let here may answer, and then we'll come to you. Who, who's Ann and then to you?
You wanna jump in here? Cut the park in half and do the sixteen and come out even?
This is negotiating, right?
You wanna, go ahead, go ahead and... Yes, my name's Britt. Obviously, there's a lot of question between the seventy-two and the ninety-six. The seventy-two came about from the PNZ meeting. Obviously, we, we had presented a concept that had a more mix of houses with townhomes, duplexes. It probably met a price range or a group of price ranges that would be more in what, what you were looking for, that had both inclusionary housing and the possibility of something that's not a million-dollar home, something that's more in the five or six or something to that range. You know, again, those numbers are speculative at this point. This is just a concept that came out of the discussion and where we tried to, I guess, meet in the middle. If this isn't the middle, then I guess that's what we're discussing, but I, I would hope that you would reconsider not to restrict it down on us with more inclusionary with the one in five, which just makes the concept harder and harder to put together.
And I, and I would say to council, I mean, we're having a lot thrown at us, because we just saw the seventy-two unit concept plan, and then there's your ninety-six, and I mean, there's obviously going to be a decision to be made at some point this evening as to which one, if either, makes most sense to this group. Go ahead.
So I, I have a question. I'll kind of state it with a comment. So it looks like you, you have gone from ninety-six to seventy-two. In this seventy-two, I received this today about one-thirty-ish. I looked at it, put it away, looked at it again. I looked at the ninety-six a lot. To me, it looks like on this, you have made many concessions with the neighbors in mind. With, and that is, so this neighborhood is in my ward. For the first time, we're going through a big thing in my ward. I feel like I need to listen to those people, and this is listening to those people. This is understanding what, what has already happened in those other subdivisions. It looks like you are continuing to, I know there's code in there, and there's all kinds of stuff where you try to have one subdivision blend into the next or make it similar in some way. And especially since these are butting up to each other. So going from ninety-six to seventy-two is a huge concession for those neighborhoods surrounding this area. When we throw in more units of affordable housing, it makes those units that are there more expensive to purchase. So every time, and I understand we need affordable housing, we need workforce housing, every time we have a developer give something, it creates a higher price point for everything else that is there. And that is just supply and demand, that is logic that is balancing a budget. So in saying that, I mean, I'll ask you what I've just stated, but you can answer it however you want. If we ask you to put more affordable units in there, do the rest of these units become a higher price point?
I would say that's basic economics. I mean, developers can't afford to put these things together at a loss. So if you're requiring more IH units, then we have to offset that with something that will counter the potential loss.
So in saying that, we're dri, if we put these in there, we're driving the cost of those other homes up even higher, even more than the one-hundred-and-sixty percent AMI. It just goes up and up and up, so you have some units that are affordable, but the rest of them may have just priced out of the workforce housing.
Not only that, I, I think it also restricts the units into their entirety. So if for some reason the AMI goes down, you have the reverse of what could happen to the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, yes, we're trying to find, provide affordable housing, that what you're right now is, AMI is going up, but there could come a time where that goes the other direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm leaning into the ninety-six units with the standard inclusionary housing, because we don't need more million-dollar homes. I think this is beautiful, and I wish that we could afford it. You know, I wish someday I could live in a million-dollar home. That's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna live long enough. And so I think we have enough million-dollar homes. And so I, I love the concessions that you're willing to make, but I see what the cost is. It drives the homes way up, and we need to be serving our populace, not just bringing in more Aspenites or whatevers.
With this, you have made concessions for the neighbors in, in some areas with the seventy-two units. Those surrounding subdivisions, it just seems, it flows better, the backyards to the backyard. I know that there would be a concession with that setback with the R-three, but, you know, if I were one of these neighbors, butted up here, and I rode my bike through this entire thing and stopped and, sorry, I looked in people's backyards, and but I would not like to have that three-story or two-story apartment building in my backyard as it was before. This seems like such a better flow of our city, of a new development as it flows from one subdivision to the next, to the next. Each person, each subdivision is not gonna get a hundred percent of what they've asked for. So a compromise seems more on this seventy-two unit route.
Well, again, you know, these are just two items, or two concepts on either end of the spectrum. One we presented that was met with quite a bit of conflict, and one that tried to encompass what was, what was said. You know, we're certainly willing to look at something that falls in the middle, that meets what city needs and meets what the neighborhood needs, and something that we can put together.
And I, and I think it's important to recognize, I mean, there's been no subdivision plan brought forward at this point. This is an annexation, and then there'll be a zoning. There will be obviously more details as we proceed. Thanks, okay, very good. Well, that takes us to public comment. And as I mentioned before with comment, we're really glad you're all here and exercising your First Amendment rights. We are gonna stay focused on the three minutes, because I know a lot of you have signed up. There is one thing I want to call out. At the planning commission meeting, there was someone who, at the end of the meeting, chose to approach, come up to the dais at the end of the meeting, and was very aggressive towards the planning commission. And I'm all for First Amendment rights, but I'm not going to tolerate that this evening. I just want to create that boundary. I trust that no one is gonna do that tonight, but if it were to happen, I'd have no choice but to have police escort whoever did that out of the community, out of, out of the, out of the hall, but I don't think that's gonna happen, so. Not out of the community, just out of the hall.
They call that running out on the rail.
That was a faux pas. So with that, with that lesson articulate comment, we have Rick Pilgrim.
Good evening, Rick Pilgrim, three oh eight Cottonwood Circle. And first and foremost, thank you for serving on our city council. I know that you have a difficult job, because I've served on a city council and as mayor for a small community in the Denver area. Please, please know that we appreciate your time and hard work to make Salida a great place to live, as well as the staff. Carolyn has done yeoman's work on this, especially with the amount of paper I've been sending her direction. My comments on annexation are that the fifteen acres proposed by Mr. Harder as a five-H development need to be within the city boundary, so it's just, makes sense. That's also true of the four-point-five acres that's not part of his development, and that's between County Road one forty-one and Spruce Street. It's, development for that is unknown at this time, but that's gonna be additive at some point in the future. Annexation makes sense to continue the pattern of development between County Road one forty, or Port Road, and Crestone Avenue, one sixty. The pattern is predominantly single-family homes, so it makes sense that the new development should be similar. As contained in the comprehensive plan, Chapter One, Community Character, this is Action one point E. New development should be compatible with the traditional built neighborhood character and be subordinate in mass and scale. I'll speak to that more in the zoning portion of the meeting. Relative to the pattern of development, the 2010 transportation plan, the future land use plan, the Chaffey County plans, all show connections through the area between one forty and one sixty, and that's what Carolyn pointed out this evening. We all know, we've known for, I bought the property in 2008, that this stub was gonna be connected someday, also in Crestone Mesa. It just makes sense to have that connection, and that's number four in the staff recommendations this evening. However, a direct and continuous throughway does not make sense. That's why this revised plan really responds to the, the comments that we provided to Mr. Harder in the meeting in July. We offered these street connection ideas, and they've now been revised and worked into this new concept plan. I'm very appreciative of the new street layout that makes these connections, but does not make a direct, continuous collector's street through our neighborhoods. It just makes sense. This also would comply with the police comment that you saw earlier from Carolyn. So I encourage you to consider annexation, but also consider a stipulation that the street connection should be made for access rather than a direct, continuous throughway across our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up, Ryan Delaney.
I guess, I guess I'll start by echoing the appreciation. It was a tough job. I think, I mean, I, my challenge here, right now, we're supposed to be talking about annexation. This entire thing is problematic. We, we had city staff up here and the developer reviewing plans and pretending like we don't have a plan. So the, the challenging thing for me here is, is I don't understand why the city would annex a property for which it has no clear plan for using. The biggest thing for me is the traffic, ultimately. Until we have a sense of what the final plan is going to be with an, an appropriate traffic study, I think that's the big thing for me. You look at city staff comments, they want connectivity. They developed these neighborhoods back in 2010, assuming access to this property. Did they assume there'd be ninety-six units? Did they assume there'd be seventy units? Did they assume there'd be twenty units? I live on Crestone Mesa Avenue. The number of people using that street as an increase as a result of any sort of development is concerning to me. That doesn't mean I'm anti-development. It doesn't mean I'm anti-affordable housing. It doesn't mean I'm anti-density. The missing piece here is we're gonna annex this piece of property. We're gonna pretend like we don't have plans for it. We do have plans for it. There's been no evaluation done to whether or not people will use, even with this, as a throughput to the hospital. And so it's, it's challenging for me as a neighborhood to sit here and, and pretend like we don't know these things are gonna happen when we don't have all the information, and I think approving an annexation, approving a zoning before some of that additional legwork has been done, even if it's preliminary, it, it's difficult to go backwards, because then in a year, when they submit their plan, which may or may not be this, they're gonna say, well, you already approved the annexation, you already approved the zoning, so like, why do we need to do a traffic plan? There just isn't a lot of consideration for the, the surrounding communities. You know, I, I, I feel like it's, it's a challenging situation when the public only has two opportunities to comment. City staff has been building a presentation opposing all of the public comment that's been submitted via email, via phone calls, via the public comments that were submitted during the planning and zoning meeting. Like, it feels to me like city staff is advocating on behalf of the developer. I mean, they're up here talking to each other at the same time, ignoring, like, I'd like to hear, have there been any positive public comments for this development, for this annexation? It seems to me there hasn't been, and so without, anyway. Without a traffic study, I don't, I don't understand how we can approve annexation. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Next up, Pete Porman.
Thank you. Pete Porman, two oh three Cottonwood Circle. Let me stipulate the thanks and proceed. The third option that Mayor Short represented, mentioned is one that should be actively considered here. That is to make no decision tonight, to defer this. As we've heard from the developer, as we've heard in other meetings recently, there is a revision to the land use code and a complete replacement of the definition of the zoning categories underway. The target timeframe for that is the end of this year. And to pick any, if we do annexation, we have a state-mandated sixty-day, I believe it is, window during which we have to complete the zoning.
Ninety, I believe.
Okay, ninety. That still doesn't take us to the end of the year, and so we'll be doing zoning against a undefined definition of R-two or R-three, or whatever the categories might be once the draft land use code becomes actually in force. And so it seems to make sense to defer making a decision on annexation because of the forcing function on zoning, which is going to be radically redefined in the foreseeable future. If you should choose to proceed with the annexation and therefore must proceed with the zoning, you should consider doing that in the most restrictive way. The seventy-two plan that is actually on the screen at the moment has nothing behind it, as we've heard many times. There's nothing that would require those accommodations that Rex so well-stated would be appropriate for our neighboring communities. And so if you choose to proceed, you should put the most restrictive things in there, which would mean seventy-two units. It would mean, I guess, sixteen inclusionary units. There may be some other stipulations that you would want to put in there as well. As we heard from Carolyn, those agreements can be amended in the future by a group coming before council or a future council. And so if those turn out to be problematic and too restrictive, that would be a subject for that time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have anyone online to speak on this? That's all I have signed up for this.
No one has their hand raised.
Okay, I suspect we'll get a lot more comments on the zoning. All right, very good. So does the applicant want to offer any closing statement, any rebuttal, any cross-examination of anyone who presented? I know, cross-examination seems so legal. No, thank you, okay. Does city staff have anything? Okay.
I'm actually going to give a little more background, which you are all well aware of. It's included in my zoning presentation, but because we're in this whole ball of wax about numbers of units, I'm just going to summarize quickly for you. You're aware of the community survey that was conducted in 2022. This was the survey that collected 1,222 responses with a very small margin of error. The lack of affordable housing was ranked as the most serious problem facing the city by nearly 60% of respondents. Affordable housing was indicated as the top priority for the city budget by more than 3/4 of respondents. And 30% also indicated that parks and public amenities should be a top priority. The objectives of the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance clearly state that housing for workforce is key. It stipulates 1 out of 6, as you well know, the more units constructed, the more units that are able to be deed restricted. Those provide units that are needed for teachers, service industry workers, and others, including people like myself, who barely can afford to rent anything in this city. With the remaining acres of land that can be developed in city limits, which are very few, these types of developments are really only one of our main options for providing additional affordable housing that meets these densities that can provide the numbers we're looking for. In terms of national planning policy and guidance, the American Planning Association supports the principles of smart growth, which call for efficient use of land and infrastructure that promote walkability and a mixture of housing types for just different incomes. I also want to point out that the main goals of city policy has been for increasing density as we have limited resources. And the comprehensive plan speaks to a number of elements, not just making neighborhoods look like the neighborhood next door. It's to meet sustainability goals, to meet infrastructure needs, budgeting needs, and everything that the city has to take into account. So I just want to reiterate those.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions of anyone who has offered comment at the hearing? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and that will take us to the preliminary council discussion. Who'd like to begin? Crickets.
Well, I'm going to offer a motion because this is the, this is the annexation.
I have a quick question. I guess I should have asked this before our council discussion, but Nina, could you speak to maybe like the legality of saying yes or no to an annexation? It was proposed that we could say no. And I, from my understanding, I don't know if we can if they meet the requirements that we have.
Correct, so the statutory, there's statutory requirements of what an annexation is. And then there's also the IGA with the county and the city. And I, but I just want to mention that annexation is a negotiated process, and that's why this would be the time to put conditions. You cannot condition zoning. So if this is the time that you want to, you know, either approve what's in the ordinance with the 96 units or something different, now is the time because that's where you have, you do have that negotiation when you're trying to, a city is trying to, is speaking with a developer who's asking to annex it. Does that answer that question?
Thank you.
So if we put a condition on here, how, can they change their plans? Can they move those homes around? Could they put?
So that's the condition, oh, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
You know, on that map. So what you're saying is, put conditions, if you, we approve 72 units with this annexation. Can they move that map around?
Yes, so the map, that, the map, quote unquote, that'll be discussed at subdivision. But you are able to do something like that's here, that the total amount is 96 or 72 or whatever the case may be. The proper time to make sure that there is that street connectivity and all the other things that go into subdivision is during the subdivision process where there is different criteria, there's different thresholds as to what consulting studies need to be done, that sort of thing.
So the last question would be on number six, where it says the total number of primary residential dwelling units on the annexed property shall not exceed a total of 96. So if we approve this at 96, they can still do the 72 on the map. But they couldn't do more.
Correct.
Okay, so it.
It's a maximum, yeah.
It allows them the flexibility to say, we're going to 72.
Or 1.
Oh, I was going to say.
I don't think we have a lot of people in the gallery if it was just 1.
I was going to say, as, you know, as the private landowner and a property in the county, now the landowner could develop it to have 3, you know, $3 million homes on it, potentially. I'm not looking at the numbers and looking at county code to know if that's true, so. Just speculative. The, you know, I'm also half tempted to not have that 96-unit restriction on there because of our need for affordable housing. So I, and I'm hearing the groans, so I want the audience to know, to understand about that compromise, too, that that is, in fact, a compromise as well. However, I am tempted to suggest deferring so that we could see what the developer can come back with as far as inclusionary housing and if there's any possibility of crunching those numbers and increasing the affordable units in there. I'm, I don't see a middle in there. The middle is literally missing there. So it's, if it's a difference between it being, the for-sale homes being million-dollar homes or 1.2 million-dollar homes, you know, if we can get more affordability out of it, then that might make sense. That's it. Traffic's?
No, no, I was, sorry. I was answering another question, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Traffic studies can't be required until a subdivision concept plan is presented, correct?
Can you speak to that?
Correct, we don't, okay. I can't emphasize enough that we do not have a subdivision application yet. Therefore, we cannot respond to numbers of units. If you put a limit of 96 units on the annexation, that will run with the land, that will speak to numbers of residential units. Then a subdivision application needs to come forward that actually shows how the roads are laid out, where the utilities go. The plan could change just because of public infrastructure and private infrastructure. So the concept plan was the developer's attempt to make some numbers work, to show what it could look like, what they intend to build. But nothing in the annexation agreement is going to force them to build that plan. That's what a subdivision application is for. And we can't force them to submit a subdivision application.
But we can put a restriction on the annexation agreement.
Of the number of units, the percentage of IH, things like that, yeah. You know, legal, feel free to, if I say anything wrong, to butt in.
Helpful to do when you have more of a solid plan to actually refer to instead of just numbers.
Yeah, normally, as you know, these, they go through fairly easily and then a subdivision. They have time to develop a subdivision because the zoning is really key in how the subdivision will be laid out. So they want that assurance that, okay, we got our 3, we know what our setbacks are going to be, new code, old code, whatever. And so we know what layout we can do. So that's why it's done in this order.
That makes sense, everyone? We're probably getting a little ahead of ourselves.
It's, you know, I totally get what people are going through. I come from a bigger communities where there were neighborhood plans and you got together with city staff and did a neighborhood plan that was adopted by the city. And then developments had to comply with that. We just, we don't do that here because we're so small. And we just don't have that type of process.
Councilmember Nakarado, could you speak again about your thoughts about deferment? Like, what you would hope to see from the developer?
You know, with what Carolyn just described, I don't know if it's possible to have, you know, we can't have any more conversation with the developer, but they're not prepared tonight to negotiate on that inclusionary number. Not, and an annexation is a negotiation. And so.
Yeah, well, there's still the agreement. I wanted to ask Nina this. If the ordinance is passed, Nina, the way it is, is there still room for additional negotiation with the annexation agreement, say for more IH or something to that effect? Because the annexation agreement does have to be approved by council or does it have to strictly follow the ordinance? Are they?
Now's usually the time you do it.
Okay.
Because the agreement's just to reflect or to flesh out the conditions.
Gotcha. Just wanted to be clear.
So my comment is, the longer we defer it and they go back and talk about more things, the more they can change plans. And the cost continues to go up. And it creates a larger gap between the inclusionary housing or the deed-restricted housing and the market-rate housing. Because each time a developer has to go back and redo something in there, the price of the market-rate house will go up. And then there's a larger gap between your affordable housing and, or your deed-restricted housing and your market-rate housing. And that's not what we're trying to do. We want that market-rate housing to be more affordable to income family or work, you know, those that are working in teachers or hospitals or, right, just, I mean, just more affordable is what we want, that market rate. So I know that deferring that will increase costs of market rates.
But there's nothing to hold the developer to any of that sort of affordability that you just described, except for inclusionary housing.
And they would be held to that if it is the, the units required for 72 or the units required for 96 because Bill or Carolyn would hold them to that.
The default is they'll be required to meet code.
Correct.
If you want more, you'll get more. However, the difference was the offering of the residential units being all, all.
Rental.
Rental. But that will also come into effect when we do the subdivision because then you do the subdivision improvement and inclusionary housing agreement. So that will be specified then.
And it seems to me like the developers come back with something to try to address a lot of the neighbors' concerns. And so on the one hand, the neighbors, on the other hand, there are those of us up here who are really pushing for more affordable. And we're going to have to just figure out, how do we navigate that? Because it's, it's, that's the crux of the issue, as I see it right now.
And I think the 72 is a huge compromise for the neighborhoods, for the neighbors. There's things in there that they have asked us and sent us letter after letter and flooded, and their comments, which is great because that's what we, we need to listen to, part of that, as we make our decision. What is, what do the constituents want? What do the neighborhoods want? What do the people who live there want? That's why they purchased their home to live in Salida. And we can't just throw something in there that there, you know, it makes it very difficult if a developer has compromised and making consideration for them in this. Because I know that, we'll talk about zoning, the different numbers in that zoning that could possibly be capped at.
I think it's important to remember, too, that we, and this is what makes our job up here hard, is that we have to balance what constituents want and what the city needs. Because those aren't always the same thing. And it's seeing the big picture as a council member is, I think, crucial.
Well, my inclination coming in here was to say no to everything. But as I look at these staff recommendations, I'm reminding again who the experts in the rooms are. And it is the staff. The 96 units make the most sense. We get the most inclusionary housing for it. We're able to suppress the cost of those individual units. And that's the housing we need. We don't need more million-dollar homes, more million-and-a-half-dollar homes. We need stuff that's 5, 6, 700, that our teachers and so forth have a chance to get. That's what we need.
And so am I right in understanding, like, I mean, obviously, the developers just on Friday put forward the 72-unit plan. And my sense is, at some point in the future, they'd obviously flesh it out more and come back to us probably at the time a subdivision agreement was filed with, maybe they'd show a Plan A and a Plan B, is that?
Not usually.
What?
Not usually.
It's too expensive to develop those plans.
It's very expensive to keep paying consultants to do this. If you want to see, by the way, if you want to see the 96-unit concept plan, we do have that, if you want to look at it, just for comparison purposes. But, no, a subdivision application, again, is a specific plating process. Our ordinance does require a lot of specificity in terms of layout. It's meant to ensure that the city can provide the services that it needs to.
Okay, thank you.
They're definitely not planning on bypassing that process, right?
They can't.
Right, no, I mean, they could, we have loopholes. There are loopholes. I don't want to call them out.
I don't want to, I don't want to be careful about that because, especially with the new code, we'll have minimum densities and then you won't be able to plot 3 houses onto it.
Okay.
You'll be required to build till then.
I mean, the developer has shown a huge willingness to work with the neighbors. You know, we need to cap it at 96 and let them do their work because we're not developers. You know, we don't know how to do a 72-unit plan, a 96-unit plan. We don't know how to do a 1-unit plan. You know, they're the experts in that. And they know that we need middle-income housing. You know, and they're the ones who can figure it out. You know, we're never going to make the neighbors happy. Growth, nobody's ever happy about growth unless it is made for them. That's the fact. You know, I had woods behind my house growing up. The man who owned the land held on to it until his grandchildren were grown. Then he sold it, every bit of it was developed. Goodbye lake, goodbye trees, goodbye the hills that we had, goodbye everything. And that's the way the world works. And I'm sorry. You know, we just all can't have million-dollar homes and 10 acres of land. And those people have problems, too. They still have dogs barking and animals in their yard they don't want and are uninvited. So no matter the size of the property, the issues are always the same. I did land records long enough to know that.
And I would just say that, I mean, I mean, clearly, we have a entire room full of people that are here that have concerns. And it's really important that we hear their feedback and that, I mean, I like the fact that you've got different parties that are bringing together different ideas. So I think there are ways, I mean, obviously, no one's going to get everything they want. But I think there is the opportunity for some compromise. So I just felt that was important.
Oh, no, some great ideas, you know, I agreed with a lot of things that I read. Like, I'm seeing housing sales slow down. I'm driving by places with for-sale signs that are sitting there. I'm asking myself, when is enough enough? You know, I feel like we're already there. And a lot of people feel that way, that we have enough. But we have to annex land when they meet the requirements. And when people spend millions of dollars for land, they're going to get their money back out of it. That's why they buy it.
Okay.
I know the developers spoke to the price point for the 72-unit concept plan. Could we hear about the 96-unit concept plan, what the price point would be for that?
I think he did address that, didn't he?
I think that was for the 72 unit.
No, he mentioned for the 96, he said 5, 6, 7 possibly.
Yeah, he did come up.
5, 6, 7.
I wrote it down. I wrote it down.
Yep.
Sorry, I missed that, thank you.
Okay, this is why we get paid the big bucks.
Oh, the big bucks.
I know we've talked a lot about this, but I would say that, I mean, we can certainly continue the discussion or we can move on to the zoning conversation and someone can make a motion on the annexation. If anyone's so inclined.
Did we, did anyone have thoughts about the one out of five for inclusionary housing? Did we want to put that in or...
I don't want to push that. It's just going to drive all those other home prices up more. I'd like for them to do the best mix where we get the inclusionary housing that we have written into the code, that's adjusted annually. I don't think that we should push it on an individual basis. We should stick to what we've already said, not change the game when they're already in the room with us. And I think that we should approve the annexation, as staff has recommended, and move into the next part of it.
And one thing I would say regarding the inclusionary housing ordinance, this is the second iteration of it. The first one was one out of eight and developers were given the option of a fee in lieu. The second one reduced it to one out of six and there isn't the fee in lieu option with the exception of fractional units. So I think some, you know, changes have been made and to provide some pretty meaningful workforce housing.
And I know like the inclination was to like, oh, let's maybe go after the apartments as our afford, like our inclusionary. But the other aspect of inclusionary zoning is that it's not just concentrated in one spot.
Right.
It's everywhere, it can't be pointed out as that's the, that's the affordable neighborhood.
And again, the inclusionary housing agreement is part of the subdivision development.
So we can continue to negotiate when we talk about the code with the rental units versus for sale, yeah.
Yep.
I'm just making sure we're getting everything because I know Planning Commission, they missed the cap and I just want to make sure we're also getting all the things we need.
I just want to ask one more time and I know the answer, I just want to make it clear. If this were approved at 96 units, the developer could work with the surrounding communities, the surrounding subdivisions to possibly lower that to 72, correct? There's no, so that they could get what they're asking for more as the 72 plan if we approve it at 96.
The only caveat would be, I hate to bring up the new code, we haven't passed it yet, but there will be a minimum density with the new code potentially. I don't believe it would be anywhere near 72 or even 60. So I don't think that would come into a play. But if it's part of the new ordinance, it would...
Preclude.
It would trump, it wouldn't trump the annexation agreement, but it would trump the coming down too far. Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. I move to approve ordinance 2025-14 for the proposed 5H LLC annexation, subject to council approval of the annexation agreement with the following conditions. I'm going to be reading for a while, get comfortable. One, all proposed developments shall meet the requirements of the municipal code. Two, the city shall serve the property with appropriate public utilities. Three, park dedications shall be in compliance with city requirements as approved by city council. Four, street connectivity shall be provided through any future proposed subdivision to accommodate appropriate emergency access and as per city standards. Five, pedestrian connectivity shall be provided to accommodate existing and potential future public sidewalks, shared use paths, and trail networks. And six, the total number of primary residential dwelling units on the annexed properties shall not exceed a total of 96.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Fontana. And the motion is to approve ordinance 2025-14 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, on second reading approving the annexation of approximately 15.06 acres of property known as a 5H LLC annexation, subject to the conditions included in the ordinance. Further discussion?
Nakarado?
Yes.
Cretelli?
No.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. That will bring us to ordinance 2025-15 and ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado, zoning a certain real property known as a 5H LLC annexation as high density residential R3 zone district. This is also a second reading and a public hearing. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it back over to Carolyn to summarize the city's report.
Okay, thank you.
Wait to see if anybody wants to leave. Okay, this is the request to zone the 15.06 acre property, R3 high density residential. The site is currently zoned residential mixed in Chaffee County. The remaining surrounding properties are within city limits and is owned R2 and R3. To the west is Chaffee County zoned residential suburban. Next slide. The R3 zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map indicates a mixture of variable and higher efficiency neighborhoods, which is consistent with R3 zoning. The proposed annexation lies within the municipal services area and will accommodate higher densities. Pedestrian connectivity will be provided to adjoining neighborhoods. The R3 designation is generally consistent with the zoning found in adjacent properties and would continue the surrounding patterns of development, which include a mixture of single family duplex and multifamily housing. R3 zoning also meets policy action goal of the comprehensive plan, LUG3VA, which for land use policies, calls for land use policies that help preserve agricultural lands, develop appropriate sites to urban density, and mitigate negative effects of sprawl development. Next slide. I mentioned this community survey, so that's just what these next few slides are about. We can skip through that. Again, you're very well aware that affordable housing was listed as a top priority by the community. If you go to the inclusionary housing ordinance slide, Christie, that one. Again, I mentioned this. Those are the objectives of the ordinance. Maintain a balanced community that provides housing for people of all income levels. And you can skip the next slide and move to the review standard summary. Next slide. Oh, sorry, back up. I drew this up just to show in clear terms that there is a mixture of density in the surrounding areas. Of course, you have the Cottonwood Green units are 10,000 square foot per unit. Below that, the Coach Topa Estates and whatnot, 12,800 square foot unit. Other units in the area are closer to four, five, and six, including some smaller townhomes, you know, fourplexes, things like that. And so there is a mixture around here. It's not surrounded simply by the million dollar suburban homes that people seem to imply. There's a mixture here. Okay, the next slide. In summary, the proposed zoning is consistent with overarching goals of the comprehensive plan, including goals and action items focused on sustainable development. The R3 zone district has the capability of providing a range of residential development types needed to address housing demand and affordability. While the underlying zoning of some adjacent properties is R2, the proposed R3 zoning allows greater flexibility, providing this range of types, as we heard from the developer. The R2 provides larger lots, private landscaping, less public open space, less public amenities, less room for green infrastructure, less room for public infrastructure. So the developer's plan with 96 units does require the R3 zoning to make it work. I've been told. Okay? So I'm not going to reiterate a lot of other things. We can probably move to the recommended motion. Again, this cannot have conditions attached, but I'm happy to ask if there are any questions you have.
I'll just say that, you know, I was pushing for R2 until Bill gave his presentation. And then when I saw what you just explained with the open space being able to be bigger, that sold me. Because most people aren't spending a lot of time in their yard, but they do tend to gather in groups. You know, I see the parks used more than I see a backyard used. And frankly, where I live, you know, I'm not going to use the backyard. It looks like somebody else's front yard. You know, and my backyard is a teeny little thing that I guess I could lay out in the shade in if I was so inclined, which I'm not. You know, and so it makes sense to me to concentrate the green areas and create bigger spaces. And so I'm convinced that it needs to be R3 now.
Go ahead, can you go more into what parking looks like for each again?
Yeah, so as Bill indicated, in the R2, there's a maximum coverage of parking in terms of paved spaces. We do that partly for trying to reduce our amount of impervious area, things like that. So in R2, it's very limiting. And so it makes it almost next to impossible to build an apartment building because your lot coverage of that lot needs a parking lot. And that's a lot of impervious area to cover. And so theoretically, I think, could be done, but it's much more difficult. And so the R3, the reason it's R3, the reason it's higher density is to allow for things like fourplexes and a little bit of multifamily to be mixed in.
And out of curiosity, let's, with R2, I know, you know, per the agreement, it's capped at 96. But by the code, on a property of this size, how many units could you by right do with an R2?
I mean, it's really hard to do that because, as you could see, there's a lot of road that you need just to get through this. But strictly on the density calculations, R2 at 15.06 acres, with inclusionary housing, it's 2734 square feet per unit. That would be 239 units maximum. That would literally have to, I don't even know how you do it because...
That's R2 or R3?
That's R2.
R2.
And the reason you can't do that is because you have to build roads.
Right, right.
It's like next to impossible.
Helicopter'd in.
Something, I don't know. And then, but just to give you the numbers, in R3, it's 2100 square feet per unit with your required affordable housing. And that would be 312. But again, it'd be next to impossible to build either of those because you have to have roads and you have to park. You have to have the park, you have to have stormwater protection.
So I guess, yeah, I guess the question I have is, so if you have the cap in place, doesn't that mitigate?
That goes away. These numbers are irrelevant.
Okay, because I've seen from a lot of the public comment and the letters we got, and I read all of them, that was a major, major concern. So that's what I'm trying to get my head around.
As passed with the annexation ordinance, you've capped it at 96 regardless of the zoning. So, but the reason the R3 works better is because it just has that little bit more flexibility.
Thanks, thank you.
Christie, could you go back to the map of the surrounding areas and their densities?
This one?
Yes. I do think this is really important because we have heard a lot of constituents who have expressed concerns about it not being similar to what is surrounding. And, you know, this is the first time I'm seeing it.
Yeah, and I didn't point out, but the proposal at 96 units would be 6223 square foot per unit. So that's the proposal. You can see it's right in the middle of all those numbers.
Yes. So I was going over some of the information that was sent to us by some of the constituents. And one of them was Rick.
Pilgrim?
Must have been him.
Or BFFs, sorry.
Yes, and that one, I looked at page one of nine. And on that page, there, it shows each neighborhood on there. It shows the acreage, it shows the dwelling units, and it shows the density. So I took that number and I, there's 15, 15.6 acres or .06 acres, the dwelling units at 96 would be, density is 6.37. But if you took that and you put it at 72, that density goes to 4.78. So it is, it is much more like the surrounding neighborhoods. If we went with something like the 72 with that in comparison.
Well, that's a done deal, all right? The 96 is in the ordinance, you can't condition a zoning. You're either zoning it R2 or R3 right now.
And at 72, it'd be still zoned at R3?
Yes.
At 96, it would still be zoned at R3?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the current question.
Yeah. The zoning wouldn't change.
I'm reading it all for a motion, just checking.
Yeah, yep.
Do we have a comment?
What's that?
Do we have a public comment on this one?
Oh, we're going to, but we, the applicant, do we have anything else before we move on? Okay, then, do you have anything? No, nothing on this? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and go to public comment. And I think this is where a lot of people signed up. Okay. Okay. Once again, we'll hold it to the three minutes. Paul Jensen, please.
My name is Paul Jensen. My wife and I live at 309 Cottonwood Circle. I hope that all of you have taken the time to drive through all of the adjoining neighborhoods to this proposed development. The review standards state that zoning should continue existing patterns of development. The standards also state that new development should be compatible with surrounding neighborhood character. I hope that you can see that R3 high density is not consistent with how adjacent properties have been built. Increased traffic is one of our greatest concerns. The proposed development will greatly impact the traffic in adjoining neighborhoods. We could easily see three to four times as much traffic going through our quiet neighborhood. I would like to see a traffic impact study done before you consider high density zoning for this development and a plan in place to show how the developer can mitigate the traffic impact on adjoining neighborhoods. I hope that you can see how R3 high density will diminish the character of the existing neighborhoods. I'm just really dismayed that so many of the council and the staff is so intense on forcing high density housing. And I see around the city, there's already a lot of high density housing being built. If you look over at Angel View, I don't know how you could get any denser than that. And it looks like they're planning to build more units there. So I don't see how the high density is necessary in every single neighborhood in the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Ryan Delaney again. You what? Okay, very good. Greg Reed. Yeah, yeah, I can pass him out if you just want to give him to me. Thanks. Yeah, thanks.
My name's Greg Reed, I live at 408 Cottonwood Circle. Before I start my, what I was going to say, I just wanted to comment a little on the affordability housing question. We keep hearing these numbers, first it was 700,000 and then it was $1 million for these homes. My limited understanding of real estate is that much of what a house costs is based on a square footage. And I don't understand why that's not ever brought up when we're talking about the development as to square footage of the homes, which would reduce the cost if they're a reasonable 1,000 square foot, a 1,500 square foot home versus, I think, 2,700 square feet was the number I heard thrown out a minute ago. I live in Cottonwood Green and there's probably three houses in the total development that are over 2,500 square feet. Most of them are 20,000 square feet or less. Or, excuse me, 2,000 square feet or less. 20,000 would be nice. So, down to my formal comments. Thanks again for allowing us as residents to speak to this council. And I would like to also start off by pointing out that Walt Harder, the developer from 5H LLC, had met with us to share his plans several weeks ago. But he also listened to us. And the 72 housing unit you saw, revision map, was a result of that conversation. And certainly Walt and his team made efforts to try to address some of our concerns. While that 72 unit does not address all of our concerns, it was a nice start and we appreciate Walt's efforts to hear what we were saying and try to accommodate us as much as possible. Secondly, as I've stated in my previous three minute conversations with the Planning Commission in July and a previous city council meeting in early August, we are not opposed to the annexation of the property. What we're opposed to is the rezoning to an R3 designation. Our reasoning is as... Our reasoning is as follows. The Salida City Ordinances, Chapter 16, Article 4, Section 14, 16490 states, "All proposed structures shall be in a scale that's compatible with surrounding and nearby neighborhoods." Page 4 and 5 of the Salida Future Land Use Categories document states, "Built form of a new neighborhood should be consistent with the varied character of the older areas of Salida, and infill considerations should not radically change existing character of a neighborhood." Salida Zoning District Ordinances, 164-70, states that the medium-density residential R2 zoning is composed of detached, single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences on smaller lots, allowing for slightly greater overall densities. Based on this definition of R2 zoning, I ask council to reflect on who exactly are the future residents of Salida? Are they the young, just getting started? Are they the middle-aged, moving here for a better place to raise their families? Or are they the retired, looking for a quiet, safe quality of life in their golden years? I think the answer is yes to all of those. And R2 zoning allows for the construction of small homes, for condos and townhomes, where all of these new residents can live comfortably, park their cars, and store all their pikes and rafts and fishing poles and golf carts.
Thanks, appreciate it. Rick Pilgrim again.
Hello again. The zoning process is where I'm confused by the process, and it's been very difficult to engage in a process where we have a clear understanding of what changes will be made that impact our homes. You've not heard from us because of your role in a quasi-judicial role, so we've respected that and not contacted you. So what did we do? We consulted the guiding documents, the comprehensive plan, the land use code, and really trying to understand what leverage we might have after tonight. It's difficult to understand that. This is where I'm confused, because my interpretation of the comp plan is that certain protections and assurances are codified in the plan, which is now about 12 years old. I submitted my comparison. Councilwoman Fontana, you read that, and so thank you for doing that. I cited several principles, policies, and actions, but the best summary is in Chapter 6, Housing, that states, "New neighborhoods or infill homes should be compatible with community character with respect to density, design, and demographics. New neighborhoods should mirror traditional patterns of nearby neighborhoods, offer connections to other parts of the community," which I already talked about, "and provide a variety of compatible housing types as well as amenities." We've had one opportunity to meet with Mr. Harder and his team, and that was in July. And I gotta say, like Greg, I really appreciate the 72-unit concept because it's fewer dwelling units, it's more single-family situated to reduce potential impacts to existing homes, and the connection street system, it's not a throughway, it's a connector, and the density builds from east to west, from the golf course over to the city limit. So I'm appreciative of that and the willingness to make changes. What I am confused about is R3 versus R2. R3 zoning is inconsistent, everything else around is R2, or it will be in the future land use. There's also this change in the land use code where the new table 2-3, 2-B will take the place of 16F. And that provides a little more flexibility for R3, but it's hard to understand, how does that fit? I'm also bothered by the additional development in the 4.5 acres that's future, and it's hard to understand the total number of dwelling units with ADUs. So I would ask that you hold and not confer the R3 zoning. Help us understand how the land use code will make those changes in the future and establish a joint site subdivision planning process so that we can have meaningful input. I don't like the word leverage, but that's what we would, we would need. And you already set the maximum unit, dwelling unit. So, again, thanks for your time, appreciate your consideration.
Appreciate it. Next up, Mike Lloyd.
Mike. Dan, Mike.
Boyd.
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 Boyd. Thank you.
Mike Lloyd, Allen and Cottonwood Greens. I'm gonna be the least popular guy in the room tonight because I'm gonna challenge one of your basic assumptions, and that's about affordable housing. Now, I think what you mean by affordable housing is that we'd like to make housing in Salida more available for people with modern incomes. Is that more or less right? Okay, that'd be nurses, firefighters, teachers, service providers, people like that. And the way we're going, we propose to do that is to provide more affordable units, like apartments, condos, smaller homes on smaller lots. Not reasonable to say that? Well, I think that's a noble go, goal, but I submit that it's not working. And I can give you an example of that. I think it's about five or six years ago, there was a subdivision near ours that was up for approval. And I remember the developer standing probably at this very podium, saying that he was gonna provide houses that would cost around $250,000 because they're small lots, would only, would only accommodate smaller houses. Well, now those houses are about $750,000 if you can find one available. And that story is true all over Salida, and I don't know about you, but I don't, I have a lot of teacher friends, and they can't afford a $750,000 house. And that, that's a basic fallacy, I think, is more density is necessarily going to provide more housing for those folks? It ain't working that way. You know, I think it's basic high school economics that the price of a house or anything else is determined by basic supply and demand. Well, the city can come up with all kinds of supply, do things in neighborhoods that maybe the neighbors don't like very much, but what you can't control is demand. Most of the people in this room probably live in Salida because they want to. They came from somewhere else because they wanna live here, probably the Front Range, the Midwest, California, wherever. If you came here from somewhere else, you probably brought money with you, or a job with you, or a retirement income. And you can't, you can't change that, you can't make, you can't make the demand go down, you can make the supply go up, but the demand is always going to exceed that. And that's, that's the fallacy of trying to increase the supply in Salida, it's not working. Can you look around at who's living here? Retirees, people who brought an income from somewhere else?
Thanks, yeah, the three minutes, thank you.
And that, we're trying to provide for a lower-income, lower, lower-income people, you can't.
Thank you, yeah, thanks. Come on, we got, we got eight more people to come up behind you, I wanna be fair to everybody. Thanks. Carol Kerr.
Wow, that's high. Hi, Carol Kerr, 102 Cottonwood. So we're here tonight because the town council has the privilege to weigh all these considerations and to be measured about the idea that more housing availability is a goodness that supersedes all other considerations. It is not the only consideration. You have shown a sensitivity to community character, I appreciate that. And it's, it's a phrase that shows up over and over in every town document about development. I'd like to clarify, what you already know, but let me just say out loud, that it's more than a black and white designation of number and alphabet, it's more even than size and mass, it includes decisions about parking blacktop rather than landscaping, and movement of school buses and trash trucks, for example. So I urge you to weigh the common sense concerns of community members for an R2 zoning designation to make sheer numbers and traffic impact compatible with established surrounding neighborhoods that are effectively much less dense than the art, than the zoning would suggest. Finally, I wholeheartedly share the concern I've heard tonight about housing for the missing middle, absolutely. So I'd ask if the council would, or could, consider changing the target AMI or deed restriction rules for the inclusionary housing in this case, so that you could feel that those 12 to 16 were really making the difference you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tony Aguero.
Good evening, council. Just a couple quick points of data that have been perhaps questioned. The average median price in the city of Salida, not the county, is $850,000 for a home. There are currently 290 homes for sale in the city. That's about just under 10% of all houses in Salida. The average rent is $2,500 per month. Never had to raise a mic before. Before you make these very, could I have two more seconds for that chuckle? Before you make these very important decisions that will affect the future of both current citizens and future citizens alike, please consider, misdiagnosis is malpractice. Put simply, misdiagnosis of our city's current challenges leads to an incorrect solution. Are we only treating the symptom? Should we not be looking for the root cause of the problem? If it is truly the cost of housing that is too high, that has to start with amending the county's building codes and reducing land development costs. You have to reduce the cost of the house somewhere. The market's gonna, gonna increase it based on the cost. You've gotta reduce the cost. The comprehensive plan adopted in April of 2013 is now over 12 years old. The plan describes itself as advisory in nature and will serve as a guide. There has been much discussion around the comprehensive plan's recommendation for inclusionary, inclusionary and density. That is true, but is only a small part of its 108 pages. In fact, inclusion, inclusionary, inclusive, those three words occur five times in the plan. Density and densities, those two words occur 20 times in the plan. By contrast, historic occurs 69 times, character occurs 60 times. Seems to me that preserving Salida's historic character is a bit more of a priority in the plan than others. Finally, the applicant's request for R3 does not reflect the contiguous neighborhoods. Sure, there are R3 around, but not contiguous. And the mass and scale of R2 is more consistent with those surrounding neighborhoods. Zoning decisions should not be made whether it's hard or inconvenient. That's what engineers and builders do. If it was easy, everybody would do it. And finally, action CC-Roman numeral 2 dot 1, thank you.
Thanks, and I did give you that extra two or three seconds, I just wanna go on the record for that. Denise Wentz. Yeah, okay, I'll get it to everybody.
Hi, I'm Denise Wentz, and I reside at 220 Mesa Court. I'm opposed to the annexation and zoning of the 5H property. Please put the brakes on this and reevaluate your constituents' concerns regarding high-density housing developments and preservation of the small-town character of Salida. We are not in Aspen, we are not in Denver. The results of the 2022 that Carolyn brought up, our community survey, yes, revealed that yes, the number one concern was affordable housing. The second issue was the preservation of the small-town character of Salida. The third issue in rank was the growth of second home ownership. These high-density housing developments do not produce affordable housing for middle-class working families. With units selling over $500,000, even tonight you said 500, 600, 700, that's not middle-class affordability. However, they're affordable for rich out-of-town people wanting a second home. A quick look at the Shafie County Assessor's site reveals most of the homeowners in these developments do not reside in Salida. Only 39% of the townhomes in Angel View are owned by Salida residents. The Oak Street condos, less than 25% are owned by Salida residents. The small-town character of Salida is changing into something the residents do not want. Dense housing units are crammed into small spaces, negatively affecting traffic and straining our water, sewer, and electrical capacities. The developments are not consistent and compatible, and I have to reiterate that. They're not consistent and compatible with the density size and scale of the adjacent properties. This is not smart growth. High density does not equate to affordability. High density forever changes the landscape and character of Salida, affecting the quality of life of our residents. You are beholden to your constituents, the Salida residents, not rich out-of-town developers wanting to fatten their wallets. This has been, this process has been rushed. We feel we're being bulldozed over by the Planning Commission. We feel we are not being heard. I will say, put the brakes on this, reevaluate everything, and see, and see what the needs really are.
Thank you.
And I would like you to refer to the letter that I sent everybody to.
Yeah, we got it, thanks, appreciate it, thank you. Next up, Suzanne, is it Hahn? Moon, sorry. I should've just read it the way you wrote it.
Suzanne Hune, 304B Cottonwood Circle. I'm gonna cut to the chase because rather than be redundant, people have said a lot, and I don't need to say more of that, but I will add that R3 zoning should be a non-starter for this because I do believe it is in violation of city, specific city code. Under the more feasible R2 zoning, any developer should be required to compatibly integrate with the surrounding neighborhoods and density while meeting affordability standards. Should the developer seek to obtain R3 zoning to justify townhomes and apartments, then a zoning variance could be considered for the appropriate parcel, allowing the city to retain control over what is developed in overall compliance with city code.
Thanks. Okay, thank you very much. Tim Donnelly.
I'm Tim Donnelly of 409 Cottonwood Circle. First of all, I just wanna give you a copy, and you probably already have it, but copy of the petition that we had, I believe, 49 residents sign.
We all received it, we have it on the email, so good there.
You know, and I, obviously, a lot has already been said. You know, we moved here, I mean, it's a small community. What do we, you know, what does Salida have, 6, 7,000 people? Why do we need so much high density in such a small community? I mean, we're already looking at Angel View and the expansion of Angel View. You look at Two Rivers and the area south of Two Rivers. I mean, how much high density do we really need? I mean, it's not gonna bring down the price of housing, what we talked about, I mean, 500,000 at a minimum? I mean, that's not affordable. I mean, we're just increasing density. And, you know, it's, and the other concern that I really have, guys, is, yeah, okay, this, when you look at that through street, you know, the police and the fire say, yeah, access, it'd be great. But the problem is, you're running a through street from 140 to 160 through a housing area. area that's gonna have 96 homes, new 96 homes, kids riding their bikes, you're riding, and you're following those houses through Cottonwood Green and Crestone Mesa. I mean, there's gonna be safety issues, huge safety issues. You got kids riding their bikes. You're gonna have big trucks coming through those streets. What's the safety issue? Yeah, okay, access is great, but how about safety? That's all I have.
Thanks, guys. Dewey Grover.
I'll pass.
Pass, okay. Pete Porman.
Thank you once again for listening to what we have to say. The clock is now ticking on establishing zoning. As of 90 days from today, it must be established. And yet, setting zoning tonight isn't necessary, and doing so would be voting to zone this property with a set of constraints that are completely undefined. We know that the new land use code is coming, and with it is a set is a recommendation for a replacement of all those definitions of the zoning categories. The planning commission elected to not make a recommendation to you on that land use code and zoning, but rather to defer that because they were unable to complete that action in their previous meeting. I believe the city council should defer a decision on the zoning of this property until after that land use code and zoning replacement has moved forward and been brought to you. The planning commission's current plan is to pick that up again on the 25th of this month. It's possible you'll get a recommendation out of that. Maybe it might take one more meeting, but I think the 90 days gives you sufficient time in order to let that process run to completion prior to establishing zoning for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Carolyn Kaczynski.
Good evening, Carolyn Kaczynski, 403 Cottonwood Circle. My notes have changed four times over, I'm learning a lot. One of the things that excels in my head is, do we really, I understand the importance of making thoughtful, balanced development decisions, and it's hard to address our needs. However, based on what I've heard and learned, and given the significant amount of development we all know is already underway, I'm really having trouble finding detailed information that has clear, up-to-date housing shortfalls in order to validate the R3 zoning to, that specifically address these shortfalls. I don't think it's addressing the issues, or the issues are not clear. I understand, I'm trying to understand the process. We have a subdivision approval, and hopefully, no matter what happens, we still have the opportunity to work with whomever to come to that middle of the road. Is it 7296? I do believe if push comes to shove, there's always some give and take there for a compromise, for getting closer to a win-win situation, if in fact, this development and zoning is required for Chaffee County. Lastly, and this may be a little premature, now that I've learned all the road connectivity doesn't come into play until subdivision, but I think it's important enough to call it out now. Number one, restriction for construction vehicles. I look to the city council, this is your bailiwick, I understand. Well, I'd like to ensure that any new access through Cottonwood or Crestone Mesa is prohibited for construction vehicles. The sustained presence of construction vehicles over a projected five to seven years of a development represents unwarranted and unacceptable burden. In that light, long-term access, if there is such the road, I'm still unclear, but if within a R3 zoning or any other zoning, the city requires the new road connecting these small enclosed developments for the purposes of alternative route for fire, ambulance, or other safety vehicles, then make the access just that, restricted to safety vehicles. I see no compelling justification for opening a throughway to any and all traffic. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have, that's the end of what I have for sign up. Is there anyone online?
No one has their hand raised.
Okay, no one is online, okay. So at this point, the applicant, if they may offer rebuttal, any closing statement, or anything from that, from... I see they're conferring.
No.
Okay, nothing from the applicant. What about from staff?
Yes.
I just want to make a couple of clarifications. Inclusionary housing in our ordinance is different than simply supply and demand. Inclusionary housing units are deed restricted, which ensures that they remain affordable. We do not even have a sunset on those, as you know. 96 units is the max now, as approved in the annexation ordinance. The issue is flexibility. R3 would allow for smaller lots, smaller units, as well as single-family and multifamily, a greater diversity of housing. With the R2, you're pretty much locked in to larger lots with fewer units, more of a single-family suburban style of development. I also want to clarify that in the comprehensive plan, infill does not refer to this type of development. This is not infill. This is an annexation, it's an expansion of the city boundaries. Infill, when talking about meeting community character, has to do with, for instance, downtown, the R2 in the middle of the city, the lots that are going in, the houses that are going in there, the small-town home developments and whatnot. The community spoke very clearly about wanting to maintain the historic character of the inner parts of town. These annexation areas were kind of uncharted territory even back then, so it's a different topic. Again, I want to reiterate sustainability. Infrastructure is extremely expensive. That is why you need more units to justify the cost of the infrastructure. And it's only going up as we are finding, getting bids for the South Ark development. The city is struggling to meet those needs, and the developer has the same kind of constraints with infrastructure costs. The change of the lots that are currently R3, which do abut the property as R3 currently zoned, in the new code, the reason we're switching to R2 is because of the lot minimum density and lot sizes would make some of those non-conforming. So we're trying to avoid that additional nonconformity. And as we all know, I have close relatives that are realtors, people put their houses up for sale for a lot of reasons, a lot of times just to see what they can get. So we don't really know what actual demand is right now, there's a lot of things in flux, but we do know what city policies are, and what city goals are, and what our directions have been given to us by the community, and that's, I think, what we have to go by. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does counsel have questions of any party or person who offered comment at the hearing? Okay.
Does that include Carolyn?
Yes. What's that?
Does that include?
Yeah.
She has spoken.
Yeah, well, I guess it's sort of more for the developer, but maybe you can speak to this, as far as like, what are the housing types? Like, what would you expect from an R2 over like an R3 as far as the housing?
Well, just judging by what Bill said before, there'd be probably condos, kind of long, skinny, with lots of private landscaping, because that's what an R2 lot is. It's a bigger lot, more private landscaping required, bigger setbacks, bigger minimum lot size. In the R3, you have more flexibility. Doesn't mean everything's gonna be tiny, or not, but you have more flexibility to allow for more variety. Ronnie, who couldn't be here tonight, but who drew up these concept plans, he's very creative, and it's an architecture firm, and I've been impressed with what they've done. I was a planner in Denver, and there's a lot of walkability associated with different types of smaller lot-light, lot development, where you get to know your neighbors because your front porch is closer to the sidewalk, and you're not set back as much and just spending all the time in your rear yard. So I don't know, you know, what's gonna happen, but that's why the slightly higher density of the R3, because of the dimensional standards of the R3. The density is really a moot point at this point, you know, we're not gonna get a lot more density with the R3, you've already kept it at 96.
Thank you.
Counsel's move.
Carolyn, could you please speak to the idea that Suzanne Hune brought up about like having a zoning variance?
A zoning variance is only in effect when you are needing hardship and a need to make some kind of allowance for the dimensional standards or other components of the zoning ordinance. What she said made absolutely no sense to me, frankly. I don't even know what she really meant, because you're gonna zone it R3, they're gonna meet those dimensional standards, and there would really be no hardship because they're starting with a blank slate. So they're just gonna have to meet the dimensional standards that are in effect.
Hold on, we've had public comments, so.
Does that make sense?
Any other questions before I close the public hearing? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and that'll bring us to a preliminary counsel discussion. Who'd like to begin?
I guess I'll just start off by saying while R2 seems to be the ask of the neighbors, I think it is important to just underscore something that has come to my attention is that what I worry about is something that is condominium-heavy in this project, because from information that I've gathered, the, you know, the developer is kind of had, is notorious in his other developments of not approving condos for just standard FHA loans or VA loans. Those are denied, and Angel View just got approved for FHA loans this year. That's eight years of it being a development. That's a huge barrier for first-time homebuyers. I'm not exactly sure, I guess what is happening is that with these developments, there's like an HOA supervisory, you know, commission or company that just doesn't work with them. And when you don't work with FHA loans, I mean, that applies to everything, conventional loans from Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and USDA follows FHA. That is, that is just an impossible barrier to work with when it comes to trying to get approved for a mortgage, especially for first-time homebuyers. Just thought that might be a good information for this counsel to know.
My understanding was that, didn't we make some changes in the inclusionary housing to address some of the issues with USDA and the like?
We are in the process of doing that, pursuant to your direction, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But that's for the inclusionary housing.
Yeah, for the inclusionary housing.
And I don't know when the next one's coming.
To speak nothing for any other condo that wouldn't be included in that.
Yeah, so I'm only speaking for the, yeah, just to, yeah, only about inclusionary housing, it was the question that was asked, right?
Because I guess the reality to me is that the inclusionary housing is really the only housing, given where the market is today, that's gonna be available to our workforce. I mean, unless you're making 200% AMI, which, yeah.
Yeah, just speaking to this very high hurdle of condominiums right now, especially in these other projects. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll pile on to that, Justin, and say, not only is it not available with specific types of loans, but even if you qualify for a traditional bank loan, you pay a lot more, and you can easily be shut out because they look at the percentage of units that are owner-occupied versus tenant-occupied, and so a lot of people who buy their condos, based on a very limited sampling, buy them for cash. And that's how they overcome some of those obstacles. So I hate condominiums, and I live in one, you know, and so I don't know why the trend for condominiums, because I certainly see the issues, you're forced to get along with people who you cannot get along with, you know, your lawyer fires you because they're impossible. You know, I mean, there's a lot of problems created in forced relationships, and that's what I see about condominiums. But, you know, I don't love tiny homes either. But I don't love people couch surfing with little children, and I don't love people sleeping in the backseat of their car in the Walmart parking lot with little children. And tiny homes and condominiums are a step up from those options. And we have to embrace the options that are available to us. We can't colonize Mars because we don't like what's happening here. We're living in the real world, and we have to pick from real-world options. You know, just like one of the problems that everybody experiences is personal property rights. When we're ready to sell our property, we want top dollars so we can be in a nice nursing home, not a Medicaid facility. But when it comes to our neighbors selling their property, we don't want them to do that. That's not, we don't have any control over that.
We don't?
That's all.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna go back to the R2 versus R3 discussion and address a few of the comments that I heard. The first one was about data, and is there actually, I think the question that was being poked at, is there actually a need for affordable housing? Like, do we know that that's actually needed? I would just say, yes, we absolutely do. The last Housing Needs Assessment update came out in July of 2022, so that's what's advising a lot of what you see and hear about as far as the city's strategy regarding affordable housing. And it is built into so much of what we do because the need is so great. When you come to counsel for your issue, you are missing all the other last four years of council meetings where we have heard from people who couldn't afford to live here, who wanted to work in our service industry or as teachers and nurses, and could not afford to live here because there's not enough housing, because we became a very desirable place to live. Nobody gets to come here and close the gate after you get here. There used to be plenty of affordable housing here in the 80s, but there's not anymore. So I also want to speak to a couple of environmental interests that I have when I talk about density, and that is that larger grouping of open space that we talked about that we get with R3. So it does reduce the amount of private landscaping that's available through R2, but that's actually much better, that large grouping is much better for habitat, and I'm not talking about large wildlife, but things like pollinators and birds. It's very important for that. We also get a reduced use of infrastructure. We talked about the expense of infrastructure, both monetarily, but there's also a huge carbon expense to infrastructure, where concrete and steel make up 16% of the world's greenhouse gas emissions. So if we can pack houses into a smaller space, then we're being less wasteful with our carbon emissions, and I know that'll be of interest to several of the people that spoke. And finally, we just get that community resilience, where we have mixed use and mixed density in the neighborhood, and a variety of people living there because of the variety of housing that's provided instead of the large landscaping, single-family homes. And one more thing with R2, that setback leads to more, you know, more driveway setback, more asphalt, unused, usually impermeable. So those are a few of my thoughts on R3 benefits.
Thank you. Would you like to go next? I'll make just a couple of comments, and, you know, I heard what was said earlier about sort of like the myth of affordability, and that was one of the reasons why we put forward the inclusionary housing ordinance with the deed restrictions, as Carolyn alluded to, because like when I moved here 15 years ago, you could find homes for between, say, 180 and 300, and obviously, those same homes today are probably 800, or at least some of them, between 650 and 800 or so. And so that helps us to address that, and that one out of six is an important tool in our toolbox. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I guess maybe I'm a little bit dense, but I'm struggling with, is like this whole R2, R3, if we're capping the number of units, and the number of units we're capping at is actually and the number of units we're capping at is actually below what by right they could build in R2, doesn't that mitigate the situation, then obviously provide more open space with?
Because the R2 requires bigger lots.
I understand, but I'm talking about the number of units.
Number of units could probably be about the same, but you would get a different type of housing diversity. You wouldn't get as much housing diversity. Because you wouldn't have the smaller lots.
With the cap, you're addressing the issue of not having too many units.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's my point.
The cap puts, you know, the density issue basically to bed. But the R3 allows more flexibility.
I'm just thinking about traffic impact and other things. If, you know, you have 200 units, that's obviously a whole nother discussion. But 96 or 72?
Yeah, and the other reason for having higher density and more walkability and more connectivity is so people can ride their bike to work, they can ride downtown. They have room, they have own space to participate in their neighborhood as opposed to having to drive places. So it's an attempt to, from an urban design standpoint, to reflect a more sustainable and more urban-centric neighborhood that is the rest of Salida. We're not on the outskirts of the county anymore. We're part of Salida. And so that's why our city goals have moved towards more density, to reflect that.
Thanks. Any?
Is this discussion or question?
This discussion.
Okay, then I have a couple of things. Just to make sure I'm in the right spot here. So I know our constituents in this would like to see more of the R2. Or, yes, R2 instead of the R3. But in this case, it looks to me like either one of the maps take the R3 density on either one of these. No.
It's not, it's, as I mentioned, it's, the R2 forces you to have a different housing type, basically a single-family, possibly a duplex. It doesn't allow really for apartments or fourplexes or townhomes. It's just the dimensional standards are different. So that's where the R3 allows more flexibility and more affordability.
And more affordability, it would be with the setbacks, correct?
Has to do with the dimensional standards, correct.
Okay. Okay, and when we cap that at 96, if they chose to build 96, either one of those zoning would be allowed?
You're picking the zoning, the cap is 96. The R2 would force a different type of housing product because of the setbacks in the minimum lot size and the maximum coverages. The R3 would allow smaller homes, smaller units, more cottage-type layout, which is what Ronnie has proposed on his other concept plan. So it's a difference. It's a suburban development versus a slightly more urban development.
I think your question was about the number of units, though, right?
96, I don't know if you could get 96 with the R2, frankly, with the streets and everything else. They drew out as the 72, which I believe would work with the R2, 72 unit. We're not even sure. But no apartments, yeah, you wouldn't have the apartments in the R2. Yeah, so.
Oh, the R2 would?
Oh, you gotta stand up to the mic.
We need people at the mic, sorry.
What?
We need him, if you mind coming up to the mic so people can hear you.
As she explained, if you go to R2, it gets rid of things like townhomes, apartments. If we were restricted to R2, it would probably limit the apartments, which would further cut the number of units and would even stress even more the IH units.
Thank you.
So it's not that townhomes are not allowed or that multifamily is not allowed in the R2. It is. The issue is the dimensional standards and the size of the lots that are the minimum lot size for that, which varies between R2 and R3. And I think what they're trying to say is that the larger the lots, the quicker you eat up the land mass of this annexed area, and therefore the fewer units that you can build. And obviously, we have a less diversity of housing types. So you can't get those real small lots. I do also want to mention that today, under the current code, there is a, you know, a small difference between R2 lot sizes and R3 lot sizes. There's a little bit larger difference between attached lot sizes between R2 and R3. But in the new proposed code, and I, you know, this is the elephant in the room in a lot of ways, the proposal increase or significantly reduces the allowable size or the minimum lot size of R3 lots. So there becomes a much greater difference between R2 and R3. And that is where you would see that greater diversity of housing types. Smaller lots, smaller units on those lots. So I've heard the conversation, and I just need to mention that because you'll be seeing that code very soon. And that difference will be that much more apparent, so.
The new code will not be in effect within the 90-day period. There's just no way with the hearings, the scheduling. So if you defer this, it's not, the new code still won't be in effect.
Any other points of discussion? Christie, can you bring up the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado, zoning certain real property known as the 5H LLC Annexation as high-density residential R3 as it meets the applicable review standards and policy goals of the city.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Nakarato, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance of the City of Salida, Colorado, zoning certain real property known as the 5H LLC Annexation as high-density residential R3 as it meets the applicable review standards and policy goals of the city. Further discussion?
Cretelli?
No.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you all very much for your participation this evening. We're going to, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. I love when you say that. It's like the best thing I've heard all night.
Hi. Dan, sure.
Now just mention it, email it to me because I'm going to have to have him come sign up. That's the one.
Was that the Shriners?
Not yet, but.
Yeah, have you reached out at all to the FIBAR board? Because we don't even put that board, there's a whole board. Yeah, yeah, it's, and I think there's going to be a bit of a change in the board, so. Yeah, sorry about that.
I really wish I could go back in time and be like, actually, that sucks.
I know, I wish I could too, but.
It like took me like 20 minutes from the walk home to be like, wait a minute. Because isn't like asking people if they like ice cream?
Dan, are you ready?
This is home, thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started again. And next up, we have accepting the resignation of Charlie Goodson from the Chaffee Housing Authority Board.
Hi, yes, sorry, where did everybody go? I mean, just as if. Okay, good. Thank you for staying, I really.
All the cool kids are showing here.
Is it because you're having so much fun?
This is good, and I am just not together, I apologize. I'm, here I come. So Charlie Goodson was appointed by this council in January to fill a role, the Chaffee Housing Authority. Mr. Goodson presented his letter of resignation to the CHA board last week. The executive director, Marjo Kurgis, passed it along to us as the appointing board and passing it along to you to accept that resignation. That's the only action really here. If the council does accept his resignation, his term is set to expire on January 31st, 2027. So there's, you know, still about 18 months left, give or take, of his term. The IGA does note, obviously, that any vacancies then are filled by the appointing body. So we'll have to make that determination after, if you choose to accept his resignation.
Okay, so you bring something forth at a separate time as to?
Yes, based on the direction of the council and this discussion.
Questions for Christie?
I have comments.
We'll get into discussion, yeah. Seeing no questions, we'll go right into discussion, and I believe you are teed up.
I am. So I was, I definitely approved Charlie Goodson for the CHA board. He did reach out, and he did not realize what a big position this would be. As I think several people on boards realize after they get on there, kind of like this council. So it was too much for him, and he reached out. And yes, there could have been different circumstances with him reaching out and such like that. But he did finally reach out and explain that to me, that this was with his work, with his main position at Monarch. It was too much. So he apologized several times and said he is sorry. He didn't want to let anyone down. He realized after he got on there. And he hopes we find somebody that will understand that position better than he did. So that is directly from him. And that's about, that's about all he had to say.
Who'd like to go next? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just say we have to allow people to change their minds. And that goes for a lot of things. So I, I think there were some points in Charlie's resignation letter that I did agree with. You know, he talked about the intimidation factor of joining this, the board, and I think that's real. And I think we've all probably felt that, like you said, when we joined city council. So I think there's a lot of value in having somebody potentially familiar with government boards. And it doesn't have to necessarily be city council, but planning commission, council, just having that board experience would make it less intimidating. And I know that there's some time to fill on that appointment. Docket, my appointment is up in January of 2026. I've said it before to a couple of you, but I would really love to seek reappointment at that time because I feel like things are, things are getting, not getting, but they're rolling very well with the housing authority currently. We had Christie, sorry, Administrator Doon, and Councilmember Pappenforth, and I had We had, um, Christie, sorry Administrator Dune, and Councilmember Pappenforth, and I had a, um, meeting with the CHA staff on Monday.
Last Monday.
Last week.
When was that?
Like, when was that? Um, it was recent, and, um, gosh, the staff are really knocking it out of the park. So, um, it just feels like, um, it's not a, a great time to leave, and I know that'll be up to the sitting council at that point for my appointment, but my hope is that somebody, um, from council or Planning Commission or associated in that way with the city would be willing to jump in.
Uh, you know, I thought that Charlie's letter was awesome, and it spoke to a lot of issues that boards have in general, and I have love-hate relationship with boards, because boards who are really good hire excellent staff, and then they don't have a heavy lift. Boards that are weak hire weak staff, and then they have to work too hard. So, there needs to be some real shifts that are see happening. The staff is becoming very keen at CHA. They are well-versed in what they're doing, they are excellent. So, this workload on the board is about to shift to something that's more reasonable. Therefore, I'm throwing my hat in the ring to pick up Charlie's seat. I'm willing to do it, because it's not going to be the ridiculous show that it has been in the past. And if somebody else wants to vie for that position, uh, bring it.
Harm-wrestling, huh?
Bring it.
Not throwing your hat, you know?
I'm just curious, does anyone else sitting up here have an interest on sitting on that board?
Um, I, I would, if, if you feel like that's, I mean, I know you just said you wanna do it. I was very prepared to step into that position. I know it's a lot of work, obviously, um, we have many meetings, there's a lot of stuff that goes with it. Um, I would definitely throw my name in the hat. I have a lot to learn on that, and I know that you may have more experience than I do with that, um, but I would be willing to, to learn that.
I've lived in a lot of cheap, shabby places in Salida. Places that didn't even have a closet, that the shower didn't have a opening, it was just the bathroom full, you know? Uh, and so, I would propose that it's me now, and that she throws her hat in the ring, uh, in January. I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, and we can, um, yeah, we can bring this forward, and if anyone else decides to have an interest, just reach out to, to staff over the next couple of weeks or something?
Yeah, absolutely, if planning, if somebody on Planning Commission is interested, let's get everybody who's interested out there, so council has a choice.
Do you want me to put, eh, an ad out in the paper, or would you like it to be more internal at this point? There's nothing that says, says we have to put an ad in the paper, I just wanna confirm that I know what...
Why don't we maybe reach out to the Planning Commission, see if anyone there has any interest, and then we'll reconvene? Does that make sense?
I really agree with Dominique's point that having experience with boards and understanding some of the constraints, because that's one of the big learning curves on council. You think you can do all kinds of stuff, and you find out, oh, no, you can't.
Right.
You know?
I liked, like, yeah...
We already know that.
Yeah, when Charlie's, uh, like, the job description claims you need to spend ten hours a month, it's like, aww, that's so cute. I wish, I wish it was like, it's like, only ten hours!
I also like the idea of putting it out there more than just to the Planning Commission, because we have a lot of retirees in this community that could possibly fill into that position with a lot more experience, um, I mean, we, that could possibly have more time than somebody's working a, a full-time job, because this is a volunteer position. So, I like the idea of putting it out there to more than just a small group, and if you don't put it out there, they're not gonna know about it.
What if we did that on the regular schedule of the January, at the beginning of a term? You know, and let the fill-in position for Charlie...
But Charlie's one goes to twenty-seven, not twenty-six.
That's fine.
Wait, wait, yeah.
You, you give that some time for other people in governance to say, "I'm interested in that," or "Not," you know, see what kinda choices that we have. Then when you come to a full term, you know, then you put that ad out there and see if there's other people.
I also just wanna put in a plug for continuity, um, on that board, because there were, you know, what Charlie spoke to was a lot of transition there in the beginning of the year, where there was no orientation, because there was literally three board members left, um, in January, so there was no, and an interim director, so there was nobody to do that orientation for Charlie. So, I worry about getting into that territory where somebody has a steep learning curve, maybe for both government boards and understanding our housing needs, as we just saw, um, amongst, um, the demographic that was here, that, oh, kind of a lack of understanding for the housing need. So, I would love to, um, get somebody in there who, who understands the workings of govern, of government right now. We have, and I think it would work with the other representation that we have on the Housing Authority Board currently, where we have, um, lived, experienced, non-government, we have several other non-government representatives. And I think, I think somebody from within the city would be a great addition right now.
And you just explained why I ran for a second term, to create some continuity here.
Right, right.
Uh, you know, and so, yeah, that makes a lot of difference when some people, you know, kind of understand the rules and, you know...
I think that would be really helpful right now, to have somebody else on, on there that understands the limitations of government, too, because that, um, there aren't a lot of other government...
So, that's why she would step in, and then your, your term is, is complete in January.
Yes, but I would seek reappointment in January for that continuity. Yeah.
Ah.
For that continuity, yes, as a citizen, and that would, of course, be up to the seated council.
It, it sounds like some pretty good direction, does anyone, so, given that, you feel good with that?
Yeah, I'll bring a resolution forward to the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, so, all that I think would remain is someone wants to make a motion.
I quickly do wanna add that I was also interested in joining the board as the representative.
Okay, well, that's great.
Yeah.
That's great, so, that will be two weeks from now. Yeah, appreciate you putting your name up.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the resignation of Charlie Goodson from the Chaffee Housing Authority Board.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to, uh, accept the resignation of Charlie Goodson from the Chaffee Housing Authority Board. Further discussion?
Martin?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.
And Mayor, could I jump in with a comment?
You know, I wanna thank Charlie for his service, I understand that he did some great work, uh, for the Housing Authority, and I know it was very much appreciated by the board.
Thanks, appreciate that. Okay, so, I, I, I think we can, this one should be relatively quick, and then we'll get a motion for, for adding, past nine o'clock, but we'll go, I think we'll be fine with this, so, yep.
Hi, okay, this is for Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, the findings of fact for the five H LLC annexation. As previously described, the annexation consists of a fifteen-point-oh-six acre property, which lies within the municipal services area of the joint Salida and Chaffee County Planning Map. State statutes require approval of findings that the proposed annexation has met the requirements of the state of Colorado. That notice was in the paper, published for four consecutive weeks. The notice of annexation was sent by registered mail to appropriate county and district offices, and a public hearing is held on the annexation, and term of the area to be annexed complies with the state statutes, which include that not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the area is adjacent to Salida's city boundary. The property has not been divided since starting the annexation. No other annexation proceedings, including the property, have been started by another municipality. The annexation will not cause the property to be detached from the school district, and the annexation is not three miles beyond our municipality, and there is a three-mile plan in place. And then you can move to the motion recommending approval.
Questions for Carolyn?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, approving the findings of fact for the five H LLC annexation.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. The motion is to adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, approving the findings of fact for the five H LLC annexation. Further discussion?
Cretelli?
Yes.
Necrotto?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And if I could just get a motion, just so, because this next one might take a few minutes, just to extend the meeting, let's say to nine-thirty, that should probably give us...
I move we extend the meeting to nine-thirty.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Fontana. The motion is to extend the meeting to nine-thirty. Further discussion?
Necrotto?
Yes.
Stevens? Oh, I'm sorry. Pappenforth? Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and next up, Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving the Salida Quality Farms LLC Meadowlark Drive subdivision. Uh, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and take it away.
Okay. Um, you are familiar with this property, it's already been annexed. The applicant, Salida Quality Farms LLC, represented by James Eltreat, who is in the building, has submitted a complete application to subdivide the forty-three-point-oh-two acre property located off Meadowlark Drive between CR one-twenty and CR one-forty, adjacent to the western edge of Angel View subdivision. The annexation was approved in August of twenty-twenty-four. And here he comes. The subdivision includes, next slide, um, the subdivision includes a total of four development parcels, two public park parcels, four acres total, two outlets for stormwater detention and associated public street and utility rightsway, as requested by Public Works. The park on the plat was separated into two parcels, we have, um, like, two dedications, so, um, Jim Tree dedicates the land to Places to Age, and then Places to Age dedicates their two acres, and then the other two acres are dedicated, so that's why the plat has a couple of dedications on it. The draft plat is slightly different than was reviewed by Planning Commission in that the, um, private development parcel number two has shifted up on top of the eight acres that is being, um, donated to Places to Age, as opposed to before, it was on the side, um, adjacent to that street. Doesn't change the acreages, doesn't change the number of development parcels or anything, just a minor modification. And then the next slide, the process for a major subdivision is, is considered a project requiring major impact review, which is reviewed by both Planning Commission and City Council at notice of public hearings. The commission made their recommendation for approval. It can be approval with conditions or denial. The condition, the commission, um, may also remand the application back. In this case, they recommended approval with some conditions. The request, as you may recall, was presented at a joint work session with City Council in April, on April seventh. The main goal of the proposed subdivision is to accommodate the dedication of the eight acres for ownership to Places to Age, which will help expedite financing for anticipated development of senior housing facilities, as well to secure dedication of the four acres of the public parkland and appropriate city rightsaway. Construction of the required public utilities is stipulated with this application. However, a full set of civil plans is not being submitted at this time, and that is being consistent with the flexibility allowed under the memorandum of understanding that was, um, done with Places to Age. So, this is not a full-on type subdivision application, like we will likely see with the one that just happened. Um, this is mainly to get the parcels established, so that, um, Places to Age can then proceed with, uh, more of their design. Once a complete development plan has been prepared, this will be brought forward along with, for review, along with subdivision improvement and inclusionary housing agreement as applicable. The requirements of the Salida Quality Farms annexation, which was ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirteen, to include four acres of public park dedication in the provision for a portion of a shared-use path network have been satisfied with the application. I will state that, um, oh, the review standards are, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but the typical review standards for subdivision have, have been followed. And the park dedication, as I said, has been put in place. All other applicable city codes and design standards shall apply. Okay, in terms of agency reviews, um, there were no concerns from police and fire. Again, the park development was put in place. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the park at the Planning Commission meeting, and this is a kind of a sticky wicket, because we're trying to figure out who's gonna build the park. And, um, I'll get to that in the conditions. Uh, just to continue the agency review, Public Works indicated that appropriate sizing of stormwater facilities and complete civil plans will, of course, be required with the subdivision improvement agreement, and, uh, traffic impact assessment may be needed, depending on the level of, um, development that's proposed. System development fees and, and Salida Schools, uh, fees and lieu will be required. And, uh, there was a gas main easement that needed to be indicated on the final plat, so that will be corrected. Okay, now to the staff implementation. As I mentioned, there was a lot of discussion. In my initial, uh, recommendation, I included that of sort of a basic first phase of park development be required, but Planning Commission, um, basically came to the conclusion that they wanted to exempt Places to Age from any of the park development. So, um, that was discussed quite a bit, the pros and cons and whatnot, and it was just felt that that was, um, too great of a financial burden for them, for what they're attempting to do at this time. And so, in the conditions, um, that are recommended, that speaks to that, as well as other standard conditions that we do need to put in the, um, subdivision approval. So, for the next slide, the first, um, recommendation is that the first phase of development of the four-acre park shall be required to be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any structure within the subdivision, with the exception of structures built on the eight-acre parcel identified as parcel three of the proposed Salida Quality Farms Meadowlark Drive subdivision plat, which is proposed to be owned and developed by the Places to Age for the purposes of senior care facilities or housing and related services. Places to Age refers to the five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization with whom the city has a memorandum of understanding. I just kind of flushed that out, so it was very clear what exactly they meant. The second condition is that the first phase of public park improvement shall include the entire four acres, and shall consist of, at a minimum, grading irrigation, turf grass, park signage, an eight wood, eight-foot-wide concrete shared-use paths along the perimeter of the park, and street trees at required intervals, a path connection to the park in Angelville Neighborhood subdivision extending across the entire park in the proposed subdivision, two county road one-twenty, Poncha Boulevard, and two park benches and two shade trees and a partridge and a pear tree. I just had to throw that in there. Within the subdivision, other than place, other than Places to Age shall be required to comply. So, this was put in just to say that a park is gonna get built, kinda by the next in line. It's just what we gotta do, 'cause we need a, we need a park with that dedication. It can't just sit there being a fallow field forever. The third, um, recommendation is that Places to Age shall be exempt from park development expenses as the four-acre park dedication requirement, as identified in the annexation agreement, fulfills the park dedication requirement solely for the eight-acre parcel identified as parcel three of the proposed subdivision plat, again, just to clarify. And four, construction documents complying with City of Salida Park Development Manual and Park Construction Standards and specifications shall be submitted to the Director of Parks and Recreation for review and approval as part of the subdivision improvements agreement, and prior to the issuance of any building permits in the subdivision other than for the eight-acre parcel proposed to be developed by parcel Places to Age. So, again, trying to be very clear here. The fifth condition is that future phases of park improvements shall be identified to Director of Parks and Recreation to be consistent with the city's park development standards. In, in a perfect world, we'll have some kind of master plan that will really flush out all of the other improvements of the park. Um, a full set of, number six, a full set of civil engineering plans for all other public and right-of-way improvements, including the eight-foot shared-use path and associated parkway improvements, is illustrated on the utility plan, phase one, shall be submitted to the Director of Public Works for review and approval to be constructed as part of the subdivision improvements agreement, and prior to the issuance of any building... and prior to the issuance of any building permits for the subdivision. So, kind of the next step, we will need the, um, construction documents for the subdivision, um, but this allows Places to Age kind of move the process along. And seven, the eight-foot-wide concrete shared use path, street trees, turf, and irrigation shall be constructed generally within city right-of-way along the north and west perimeters of the park, as required to meet city standards, prior to a certificate of occupancy for any structure in the subdivision. So we had to give us, give ourselves some goalposts. Building permits, we need the CDs for the public infrastructure. Certificate of occupancy, the street trees and the path next to the park have to be in. So, those were kind of like the minimum things we wanted to clarify and put in conditions for the subdivision at this stage. And with that.
Okay, great. Questions for Carolyn?
Good job on the clarification.
That's really clear.
Very clear.
Oh, ambiguity. Uh, I know we have the applicant here. You're welcome. Any comments, presentation? You don't have to.
So I am on the, uh, the public list here, um, based on the recommendation that you know that we're here. Um, we're prepared to answer any questions, um, don't have any, uh, any, any public comments at this point.
Thanks. And so you, there are people signed up for public comment?
Mr. Eaton's the only one.
Okay, and you're good? Okay, you're good. Awesome. I, I just wanna, um, say thanks. I mean, this was a colossal group effort, and there's Mr. Treat for his involvement, and then all these volunteers you have. And I know it's been a really heavy lift, and you have shown dogged determination, and I really appreciate, uh-
Continue to do so.
Yes.
Dogged determination, we've got that.
I have no doubts about that.
Yeah, and I would say for the record, you know, from Places to Age perspective, we appreciate the support of council and staff and the Planning Commission, um, it, the flexibility, and, uh, we realize we'll be back, um, with, with a, a very definitive plan. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, no, no, I see no need for any rebuttal. And does council have any questions of anyone who has spoken so far? Seeing none there, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and that'll take us to preliminary council discussion.
I would offer a motion.
You're, I would accept one.
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven approving the Salida Quality Farms LLC Meadowlark Drive subdivision as it meets the intent of the applicable review standards for a subdivision subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Did I get, okay. And the motion is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven approving the Salida Quality Farms LLC slash Meadowlark Drive subdivision as it meets the intent of the applicable review standards for a subdivision subject to the conditions recommended by staff. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Necorato?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and next up, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city on the November fourth, twenty twenty-five ballot regarding F Street access during the summer months of twenty, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, per, uh, council's direction at the last council meeting, this resolution is brought forward to put a question on the, um, November fourth, twenty twenty-five ballot regarding F Street access. As you all are aware, uh, beginning in twenty twenty, F Street has been closed to vehicular traffic four out of the last five summers, and has been turned into a pedestrian mall and plaza. Um, in twenty twenty-five, so this most recent year, um, the F Street Plaza was, uh, open from May first, um, until September fifteenth, which is when we will be reopening it to vehicular traffic. Um, there has been a great deal of discussion, um, at the council level, at staff level, at the community and business level about this every single year. It's one of my favorite topics. And also, um-
Mine too.
I know, I know. You know, it's one of the, it's so interesting, this is my, I, actually, I won't. This is what you have in front of you, and so, sorry. This is what you have in front of you. Um, you can see the resolution attached to this. The, the question as presented to you, um, which I drafted with our attorney, um, Jeff Wilson, who is, um, uh, an election, you know, guru, so he helped, uh-
That's on his business card.
So I, it is, I know. I'm sure there was something, some other way I, I should have said that, but, um. So this is what we have. This is the, and, and you, you can obviously amend this if you'd like. So the question is put forward is, shall the City of Salida restrict vehicular traffic on F Street from Sackett Street south to the mid-two-hundred block for a period specified by the City Council from a date certain in May through a date certain in September for the years twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight? So what this does is provide, um, the council to receive the input from the voters in November regarding vehicles. It sets a sunset of three years that allows for planning to take place for either some form of super block idea or some other, um, plan that the, the council, which will be seated, um, on November fifth, will be able to take forward. So it gives a little bit of leeway, but it does provide for, um, getting that input from the community.
Beautiful job.
Yeah, thanks.
You and Jeff.
Questions on this?
On fire.
Okay, then we'll move on to discussion. I just want to thank, I believe it was Councilmembers Martin and Cretelli that, uh, brought this forward. I think it's a great idea. I mean, every year, it's, I, it's just, it's been really challenging, and just to let the voters decide, um, I think is brilliant, so thank you.
I have already had people come up and approach me. Um, obviously, they're hearing about this already, and they have already talked to me about it and said, "Thank you." It's, it's time we get the vote, and that, not we, them.
You get to vote too, by the way.
We too, I'm sorry.
We get to vote, we so vote.
She's saying she doesn't vote?
I do, I vote.
You don't have to skip that, yeah.
So, so, they, they're very pleased that they have some input on this, and, um, they're, they're just excited. I've probably had fifteen people in the last few days. So, that's quite a bit.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
I think the, the sunset is fair as well, and it gives just a really clear timeline that people can work with. I think the biggest complaint I hear is just it looks stark, or it looks like it's, nothing's been put into it. This would allow for that, um, that investment.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
I would love a motion.
I'm curious. I don't know when we could discuss that. Someone asked about extending.
Yeah, so I was gonna just comment on that afterwards, because it is a different question.
Okay.
But, good point. I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city on the November fourth, twenty twenty-five ballot regarding F Street access during the summer months of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
So a motion from Councilmember Necorato, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city on the November fourth, twenty twenty-five ballot regarding F Street access during the summer months of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight. Further discussion?
Oh, where am I? I'm sorry. Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Necorato?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, and then Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving an annexation agreement with Block Seven Development LLC for the annexation of certain real property into the city. And Kristin, I want to commend you. You have been here since before six. You were here to the bitter end, and-
And earlier today as well.
And we have a grand prize for you, and we don't, we don't.
Got an ice cream sandwich, that's all you can do.
Um, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll be, uh, Kristin Hodges, Associate Planner. I'll be, um, presenting this item tonight. So, as a reminder, we talked a little bit about annexation ordinances and annexation agreements, both tonight and in the past. The purpose of the annexation agreement is to kind of memorialize the agreement that was made at the time of annexation on that ordinance in an agreement form with the owner of the property. So, all of the ordinance, um, annexation ordinance conditions that were approved by you all for the annexation of the Mesa Ridge property, uh, just translate into this agreement. And I do want to point out two, um, two or three changes. One of them is more substantial than the others that have been made since you guys received this packet. Um, the first one is just a date error on the very first page of the, um, agreement. It says twenty twenty-four. That is not the year we're in right now, so that will be changed to twenty twenty-five. Um, the second one, uh, is number five point four point three in the, in the, uh, resolution itself, or agreement itself, sorry, or just number three in the CAF. They're the same, the same link, the same change is happening. So originally, it said, "The number of permitted dwelling units shall be designated for each lot to ensure that the inclusionary housing units provided satisfy the code requirements. Dwelling units in excess of the allotted amount on each lot shall pay the inclusionary housing fee and lieu for each additional unit built. The fee and lieu shall be per the fee schedule in place at the time of building permit at the point-nine rate, which is the five new unit slash lot rate, and then paid at, before the time of certificate of occupancy." So after some legal review, this was a little bit problematic, because it's talking about lots, whereas this is just for the annexation, which is the one lot. So we took the intent of this paragraph, and we changed the language to be the following, and I can read it again for you guys after, um, after the first round. So now it will say, "The number of inclusionary housing units provided shall determine the allowed number of market rate units on the property and any additional fees and lieu required." And then a subsection of that is, "If two inclusionary housing units are provided, up to ten market rate units will be built." This is strict application of the code. "Any additional units built on the property, the whole property, shall be subject to the fee and lieu per the fee schedule in place at the time of building permit at the point-nine slash five new unit slash lot rate, and paid prior to CO." And the second subsection of that reads, "If three inclusionary housing units are provided, no market rate units will be subject to inclusionary housing fees." And as a reminder, this is because they would be covered for up to eighteen units, and only seventeen are allowed on the property. So this just kind of clarifies the intent. Um, we're not substantially trying to change anything, not trying to, you know, pull a fast one on anyone, but this applies more to the annexation of the land, the property as a whole. And then, when we do the subdivision improvement agreement, we can go into that lot allot. Lot allotment amount, so.
That seems like a lot.
It's a lot of words for, uh, nine oh-nine PM. But, uh, the rest of the conditions are, um, verbatim from the ordinance. So if you had any other questions on that piece, if you want me to reread it or go over any of the other conditions, I'm happy to, to do that.
Questions, anybody?
Makes sense.
Appreciate you communicating that.
Yes, I just, um, as far as the calculation that is, like, per lot when we're applying it to the property as a whole, it's just-
We're still keeping the one per six, correct?
Okay.
Yes. And it's, it's just, it allows a little bit more flexibility for if the developer wants to build two or three. We're saying, okay, if you build two, here's how many units at market rate you can build, and then the fees would apply to any extra, or if you build three, then you're covered.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we go on to discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine approving the Mesa Ridge annexation agreement.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine approving the Mesa Ridge annexation agreement. Uh, further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Necorato?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and council reports, we're getting closer, everybody. Uh, Councilmember Martin?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Pappenforth?
Pass.
Okay, Councilmember Fontana?
Okay, so we had a finance committee meeting, um, and we had a huge agenda. Um, thank you to everybody that was there. Um, and one of those was, uh, an important item that I would like to direct staff and possibly get a second is to have, um, staff work with the Chaffee Kennedy County Community Foundation for direction to work, um, with the city on, in a work session of how we would like to set some guidelines for our, um, scholarship recipients or how they decide who is going to, those scholarships are going to go, go, go to.
I would second that and ask that staff present some options to us based on your knowledge of survey results, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, that's what we discussed at the finance committee. Um, just see what they're doing.
Got direction there.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so, real quick, nobody's here. Thank you to everybody who came. That was, that was all, there were a lot of people, a lot of people passionate about that. Um, it just shows people are listening in the community, and so are we. So, next one is, um, last night, uh, we considered the presentation from the county commissioners. Uh, I'd like to thank PT, Gina, and Dave for being here. Um, after considering that information and looking into what the downtown Salida Business Group, um, has said with strongly opposing the measure, as they believe that such an increase in those taxes will, um, reduce tourism that has already hit with Salida's tax, tax rates on lodging. Um, and they believe that the end result would be continued loss of sales tax revenue, putting our small locally-owned businesses at risk and reducing our coffers. Just went to, that was from them directly. I want to make sure everybody is aware of that as you go to vote, because that is probably coming on the ballot, um, as you can see. Um, next thing, I did go to the American Legion right before this meeting. I had a meeting at the American Legion. Um, they are doing great things in our community. Um, they are looking for members. We, I know people know veterans, and a lot of veterans are not involved in the VFW, the American Legion, or the Marine Corps. I'm not trying to say anybody's aging, but some of the veterans are getting older, as we all are. Um, and they need some new people to step in. So if anybody knows anybody, they're wonderful organizations, they do a lot for our community, and they want us to work together, and they need some new members. Um, they, they would like to jump right back in. We did have, we were gonna have a presentation last night by them. They, a few of them got sick, very sick.
And they'll be back in a couple weeks.
They'll be back.
Do you have a date? Sorry.
Yes, we have recommended the second, um, meeting in September, the work session, and that's what, they are all gung ho for that.
Okay, great.
Um, and they're going to have many veterans here, is, is what they're saying. So I'll, I'll be very happy to see them here. Um, and they, they are open for questions, comments, anything at all time. I can get anybody in contact with them, but please refer your veterans to some of these organizations as the, that their generation is, is starting to get tired. So, that, that's all.
Councilmember Necorato?
Just to say, I'm happy to see there's so much interest in the housing authority, and that's it.
Thanks. Councilmember Cretelli?
Um, just, um, a quick thing that has come up from, um, the arts community as far as, um, discussing the possibility of having a, um, you know, like, new developments that happen. We have requirements for, um, open space. Um, in that same vein, they're, they're looking for maybe, uh, you know, requirements to put money forth towards, for new developments towards public art. We do prioritize green space, and they, they thought that that would be, um, an interesting way of- And they, they thought that that would be an interesting way of, you know, getting, getting some extra funds to have public art scattered more throughout the community. If there's any interest on council of pursuing that possibility, I know that when we talk about financial constraints, arts are usually first on the chopping block. And I thought that that was, other communities apparently do that, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have a discussion about it and see. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And that, that's, that's all I had.
All right, all I had tonight was, so last week, Congresswoman Pedersen was in town at Boys and Girls. Very well attended. I love how involved she is in our community. She's here really consistently. And I think that's what you want in an elected representative. So really grateful to her. That's all I had. Anything from our attorney this evening?
Yes. I would like to just remind everyone that since this campaign season, give a, a brief reminder about the Fair Campaign Practices Act. It's also known as FCPA. It's in the Colorado statutes, Title 1, Article 45, Section 117. And this prohibits the expenditure of any public monies to urge voters to vote for or against a candidate or a ballot issue. So just some reminders, things, you know, can't put campaign signs on the side of a city vehicle, on a city lawn. You know, can't make, things like this. Can't make copies of campaign literature, campaigning phone calls, or having campaign meetings at city hall. City employees, if they're to get involved with anyone's campaign, they would have to do off the clock. And then just a reminder that your appointees, the three sitting here and your judge, cannot get involved with an individual candidate or a campaign.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to report that we have a favorable. What's that?
What is that disembodied voice I hear?
Oh, can you hear me?
I can hear you very well.
Okay, good. Okay, yes. No, I'm happy to report that we have a favorable general fund balance. Also, our sales tax has rebounded. June sales tax collections increased by $24,604 or a 2.6% increase as compared to June of 2024. The city's portion of the Chaffee County sales tax collections increased by $56,964 or a 16.2% increase over June of 2024. So in total, sales tax receipts are 6.3% higher for June and 2.2% higher year-to-date. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Department updates?
Um, no.
No.
Thanks.
How about no, Scott? By 11 minutes, we beat.
Good job.
The 9:30 hard stop. So all that remains is a motion to adjourn. I'm wondering if we can get that done in the next 11 minutes.
I move adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.